Okay, Mayor, we live.
Mark, are we ready?
Yeah, we live.
Great, so today is December the first, two thousand twenty-one, and the time is seven oh eight P M. And I am calling to order the Baldwin Park City Council regular meeting. And I believe we have Pastor Jackson here. Pastor Jackson, would you mind leading us in invocation?
What happened?
Now, if everybody can join me for the pledge of allegiance, please put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. And everybody may take a seat. See, City Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Daniel Damian.
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez. Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
We hear something in the background.
We're hearing an echo.
Right.
City Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Hi, Mark, can you meet everybody on, on, on Zoom, please?
So Councilmember Paul Hernandez, if you're on, could you please let us know?
He's out today.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem, Alejandra Avila.
Here.
Mayor Emmanuel Estrada.
Here. And so we could just keep an eye on attendance. I believe Councilmember Hernandez might be running a little bit late. And at this moment, we move on. City Attorney, do we have anything to report from closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have two items to report from closed session. First of all, the council added as an extra item Romero v. City of Baldwin Park. Case number C V zero seven two nine three. That case was added to the closed session agenda. Second of all, I wanted to report out the settlement in the McLean case, McLean v. City of Baldwin Park. This was previously approved by the council, but I typically don't report out until the settlement agreement is signed and the checks are sent and everything is complete. So that has now been done, and the settlement was a total of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the case of McLean v. City of Baldwin Park. As the council knows, we've had two previous Chief of Police cases that resulted in a multimillion dollar verdict. So this hundred and fifty thousand dollar settlement is a very good settlement for the city. It's extraordinarily less than the city would even pay to defend that case. And so I wanted to, to report that as well.
Great. Thank you for that, City Attorney. And I believe we have a presentation on S B nine by City Planner Ron Garcia.
Good evening again, Mayor, Council. David, next slide, please. So before you, we'll be presenting a newly enacted law, S B nine, that was signed by the governor in September, which takes effect January first, two thousand twenty-two, which is the California Housing Opportunity and More Efficiency Act Home. Next slide. As you recall, as a refresher, just recently, the city adopted a revised accessory dwelling unit ordinance. And taking the purpose from the state law, again, it was revised to improve its effectiveness at creating more housing units and to further reduce barriers, better streamline approval processes, and expand capacity to accommodate the development of A D U's and junior accessory dwelling units. And again, what this did, state law did across California, is allowed by right up to three units on a single-family residential parcel. And that includes a primary home, a detached accessory dwelling unit, and also a junior accessory dwelling unit, which consists of a conversion of no more than five hundred square feet within the interior space of the primary home. Next slide. So the Senate Bill nine overview here, taken from the bill, is the legislation seeks to create additional housing by removing barriers, very similar to what the A D U law did, is to the sale of excess single-family residential lot areas in order to incentivize and create new housing, single-family residential zones. The bill effectively removes local control of community growth. It also has been characterized that the bill ends single-family zoning in California. And the net effect will be to allow significantly more development, more housing development by right within single-family residential zoning. When the bill was signed by the governor in September, California essentially was the second state in the country behind Oregon that adopted a similar policy, similar law, creating duplexes and lot splits. So definitely trailblazing here as we look at, in comparison to other states in the country. Next slide. So really important, what this bill does is it allows by right what's called lot splits in single-family residential zones. Minimum lot size in Baldwin Park is, for single-family residential, is five thousand square feet. Under S B nine, it could be as small as twelve hundred square feet under state law. And permits a maximum of four dwelling units on the original single-family lot, two on each parcel. And I'll go into detail in the further slide to break that down. Without a lot split, and this is just one single-family residential lot, the law allows by right the creation of two primary dwellings, whether they're attached or detached, on a single-family lot. If the primary dwelling unit are detached, it'll allow for one A D U and one J A D U. So essentially, on one single-family lot, you're gonna essentially have four lots, I mean, four units. And that includes two primary homes, an accessory dwelling unit, and then a junior accessory dwelling unit within one of the converted primary dwellings. As you recall, as a refresher, again, in the A D U law, if the units are attached, it is automatically looked at as a multifamily structure. And so that would allow up to two detached A D U's. So in both scenarios, you're getting for, the creation of four units on a single-family residential lot. One thing that the bill did, very similar to the A D U's, is that it prohibited A D U's in historic districts, if it's a historic property, farmland, wetlands, lands within high fire zones, hazardous waste, earthquake fault zones, and also within a hundred-year flood plain or floodway, conservation land and habitat protected for species. All of those are not located within the city of Baldwin Park. Next slide. Similarly to the A D U law, a city cannot require parking if located within a half mile of a high-quality transit corridor. That's one thing that S B nine did in this one, comparison to A D U, is that it highlighted that you cannot require parking within a half mile of a high-quality transit corridor or major transit stop or within one block of a car-share location. City can require up to only one parking space for the creation of the new primary unit. That's if you're not within that half mile of that high-quality transit corridor. If you want to make note that we're in, currently, community came with H C D to define major transit stop because potentially, there's a question mark there, potentially, that other transit stops within those areas that are not within the half mile can count as a transit stop, therefore, opening the other areas of the city to not require parking. Here, I've defined a high-quality transit area, essentially is within one half mile of a well-serviced transit stop or a transit corridor with fifteen-minute or less service frequency during peak commute hours. Next slide. What this slide does is it shows that half mile within a high-transit corridor. This was taken from SCAG. As you can see, let me just show you here. You can see this is the northern part of Baldwin Park. So this is Arrow Highway. Essentially, everything north of Arrow Highway is within a half mile of that high-quality transit corridor. And then south of Arrow, which essentially the cutoff is Olive. Just for context, Olive is the, is the area, so all those single-family residential homes that are located south of Arrow, not including, not including the homes that are in legal non-conforming areas of industrial or industrial commercial areas, largely in this section, but residential sections on the northerly side of Baldwin Park, in this area, we cannot require parking. The second location where within half mile is downtown. So obviously, because we have the MetroLink, that is considered a high-transit corridor, so half mile bulbs out. So just for context, the endpoint to the east is Baldwin Park High School. And then to the north, just a little below Los Angeles, and then on the westerly side is La Rica, a little past Morgan Park, that half mile, and then to the south of that half-mile radius is Vineland Elementary. And again, just for context, to understand, the areas that we cannot require parking for these lot splits. And again, you see these open areas, as I mentioned, there's a question mark as we get definition, or clarity from the state on what it defines as a major transit stop, because there are transit that cut through the city, especially in these areas here. The other area of Baldwin Park where we cannot require parking is in the southern, southwest area of the city. The westerly cutoff is the six oh five, and then you have the Walnut Creek Wash neighborhood. We cannot require parking in those areas. And then on the easterly edge, which is Foster Elementary, so we cannot require parking in those areas. Next slide. What this bill does again is it results in allowing a lot split. The new parcel, again, must be a minimum of at least twelve hundred square feet in size. With the lot split, the new parcel may not be smaller than forty percent of the lot area of the original parcel. Essentially, what that, what the bill's telling us is that it has to be a sixty forty. If you have a ten thousand square foot lot, you apply the sixty forty, and it cannot be less than that forty percent of the newly created lot of a single-family residential lot. The city cannot impose any standards that would preclude the construction of up to two units or physically preclude either of the two units from being at least eight hundred square feet in floor area. And just a comparison to the A D U, the state, city cannot preclude anyone from proposing at least an eight hundred square foot A D U. It's exempt. That's even if it's at over-lot coverage, we have to allow at least an eight hundred square foot A D U. But with the lot split, we have to allow for at least two eight hundred square foot units on those parcels. The side yard, very similar to the A D U law, four feet is required. All setback is required from the existing structure or if rebuilt in the same configuration or the location. So if you have an existing wall, they can take advantage of that existing placement to create that unit. Next slide. Lot split cannot result also in the demolition or alteration of a housing unit currently serving moderate-low or very-low-income households or a rent-controlled unit. The other thing that it does, too, is that it cannot demolish housing that is subject to rent or price control. The lot split cannot result in the demolition or alteration of housing that has been occupied by a tenant in the last three years or where an owner has used the L S Act to remove a rental unit from the market within the last fifteen years. Next slide. One thing the bill does is the city must require an affidavit from the applicant, which states that they intend to occupy. So they have to occupy one of the housing units as their principal residence for a minimum of at least three years from the date of the approval of the urban lot split. Really important to note here is it's not from the date that the structure is given its C of O to occupy the structure. The timeline starts from the date that the lot split is completed. As soon as that lot split is approved and titled through the city, that's when that timing starts. This is one key thing about that three-year period. One thing the law does here is that it exempts nonprofit organizations from having to comply with this requirement or a community land trust. The parcel, if it's split, under S B nine, you can't split it again, so you can't do a double. Same person or another party acting on their behalf cannot perform a lot split on the adjacent lots. This, just to point out, if you recall in the news lately, Zillow, Zillow was buying up hundreds, thousands of properties and trying to flip them. Under this, they would not be able to do that, again, because it requires a property owner to reside in one of the, one of the units. Next slide. One beneficial thing here, and as you noted in the previous presentation for the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, that allows the agency to count the units to satisfy regional housing needs allocation, which is R E N A. And again, just to note, what essentially became of this was a study done by U C Berkeley, the potential of a thousand additional units in the community. The Turner Center conducted that extensive analysis, which also indicated it projected at least two hundred and fifty units within that eight-year cycle. Again, this is just the tip of the iceberg of what they were able to analyze in that study of looking at the city and cities across California, of those areas, especially those larger lots that have that potential to do a lot split and add another unit. One thing in doing the lot split, we have to provide easements for public services, so utilities, water, gas, light, and also right-of-way access to the street. One thing to note is that in the city of Baldwin Park, since the general plan was enacted in the early two thousands, flag lots were prohibited. So that's a known void situation, because essentially, what this new state law does is it opens up the lot splits. So I want the, just for context, to understand what, what changes are happening here. It also curtails cities' powers to limit lot splits and duplexes, but creates an option for HOAs to prohibit lot splits and duplexes. So just to add a little bit to this, is that HOAs have the ability, the city cannot require, but HOAs have that ability to prohibit duplexes or lot splits in a specific plan or a P U D. It's up to them. The city cannot require that. Next slide. So next steps. Under our current housing element, we did identify S B nine because we knew that bill was coming, especially at the timing that we were having our study sessions with the governor signing it in September, is to adopt provisions in the zoning code to comply with and facilitate S B nine before the end of two thousand twenty-two. And with that, we have to adopt clear, objective zoning subdivision and design standards pursuant to S B nine. So per state law, we were already having to comply with this, was already gonna plan on sending out an R F P for the city to do objective design standards for residential development in the city. A lot of our design standards are subjective, which is not allowed by state law anymore. It has to be very clear. We can't say that the structure should complement the, the character of the neighborhood. It has to be clearly defined what that means. We can't use that type of terminology anymore. I just provided definition on objective zoning standards. Essentially, it means a standard that involves no personal or subjective judgment by a public official and are uniformly verifiable by reference to an external and uniform benchmark or criterion available and knowledgeable by both the development applicant or proponent and the public official prior to submittal. Next slide. The good news here is, end of two thousand twenty, we applied for a early action planning grant through state H C D, and we were awarded three hundred thousand dollars in March of two thousand twenty-one. That scope of work was planned to help pay for the housing element update and also comply with the S B thirty-five objective design standards that I just went over for residential development. So under this, now that we have to comply with S B nine and really go through that exercise as a city to understand how we're going to look at residential development now, because we're gonna see our, our R one now essentially changed to an R two, so you're going from R one to now a fourplex, duplexes. And what those structures are gonna look like, we've got to take into consideration design standards, how we design, how the lot will look as far as providing the easement or access, so that we have to go through that exercise. So with that, staff would like to revise our scope of work, resubmit to the State Department of Community Development, and also include A D U prototype plans and then the R one S B nine upzone essentially. January first, staff, myself and staff will be working on an R F P to release that, to get this work completed, compliant with state law, so the city can go through those exercises, understanding the impacts and does, and design of what our new, what our single-family residential neighborhoods are gonna look like as we move forward with this. I will tell you that, just like the A D U, a lot of cities are just kind of scrambling, trying to understand how they're gonna move forward after January first. So we just got an email, staff got an email this morning from state H C D on webinars on how to implement this new law. Very similar to A D U's, H C D took an entire year to put together a guideline, which a lot of cities were just waiting, waiting on to provide that guidance. It's gonna be a little bit of a process here, but these are necessary steps in order for us to move forward as a city as we look, we look at our single-family residential neighborhoods. That completes my presentation. I know that was a lot. I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding this, this new law. Thank you.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem.
Ron, I know you mentioned some areas, Foster, and I think it was Olive, that there's some areas that you will not require parking. Are you talking about Foster over there by Foster School? Because I know Foster goes a long ways. Because I know that area is always very crowded. So what happens in situations like that where we don't have to require parking yet? The streets may already be impacted.
If I heard you, it was a little, it was a little hard to hear you, but if I, if I got, we were saying, so the edge there for that area on the southwest side of the city where we cannot require parking, just for context, again, it was the, the limit there was like Foster Elementary School in that area, and then bounded by, on the west side of the six oh five. Yeah, that's one thing that the state law is very clear. We cannot require parking when doing these lot splits. We have to allow them by right. One thing to add, and I forgot to mention in the report, just about a month and a half ago, the state, the governor assembled a state housing task force. There was an article in the L A Times that just came out yesterday afternoon mentioning how the governor will be watching cities to make sure that they're in compliance and following the law when it comes to following these, these, these housing laws.
And I know it's, it's the state law, but it's concerning, because right there, right by Foster School, that little street is a dead end, and it gets crowded. And then you have Vineland, where it's always crowded, because there's all those condos and apartments. So that's just concerning that they didn't consider situations like that, because let's say, three properties add A D U's, and each property adds two. So that's six families, six additional families on that street that may have two, three vehicles. So that will definitely impact that section of the streets. Okay, thank you. That's all my question, Mayor.
There she is.
I just have one question, Ron. On one of the slides, you mentioned that there was gonna be a new requirement from the side yard. You said that was gonna be four feet now. We're currently at five feet, correct?
Yes, yes, typically. Yeah, and the R one, the single-family residential zone, so it'll get reduced a foot, it'll go to five to four feet now for side and rear setback.
Got it. So now, okay, so now if you're building that A D U, you can now be four feet to your side neighbor's wall instead of the five feet.
Correct, yeah. And the A D U law, also, we cannot, doesn't allow cities to require anything past four feet. So it's very similar to this S B nine, where A D U's is four feet side yard, four feet rear yard, and the, the S B nine structures can be four feet side yard and four feet rear yard as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Ron, related to, related to S B nine, but by no means pertinent to all the requirements that we will have to comply with, but there's a real movement across, I think, most of California, and for sure in Southern California, for there to be a repeal of S B nine, and I know we have not taken an official position here. You think it's appropriate to bring something back to the city council for consideration, whether that's something the city council would be interested in in joining the, the coalition of cities that are looking to repeal S B nine?
That's a good, a good note. I'm glad you mentioned that. Yes, that, that is something that the city can make a decision on. Yes.
Thank you.
Great. And then is there any other questions, comments, concerns from the council? Thank you, Ron, for the presentation. You know, I think it's, it's an interesting conversation, right? It doesn't seem like there's much. conversation, right? It doesn't seem like there's much we can do, but kind of let it happen as it is coming up from the state. You know, if we were to join one of those coalitions, we'd have to be very careful and the cost, it could, the cost, it could lead to, to the city. And then, of course, you know, seeing the trend here in California, it doesn't seem like they would have much of it would be a popular movement, but I'm just not sure that it would be able to get very far. Definitely keep all those things in mind, if that's something the council wishes to explore.
Mayor. Thank you. I just wanted to ask, Ron, if you would come back to us at least like on a quarterly basis on this, you know, this new law, just to keep us, there's, that was a lot of information to absorb in one meeting and it would be good for us to just kind of track it, you know, to see how things are moving along in our city. And I, I just like to see, sometimes, you know, you have a state law and then the local implementation is a whole different thing. So, I'd love for us to have a couple more briefings, maybe in every three months so that we can start to put a little bit more thought to this and, you know, and see how we can best respond. Because I think right now it's kind of like a receive and file. There's not much for us to do, right? But maybe as this moves along, we'll be able to form more thoughts around it.
Absolutely. I'd be more than happy to share that information. I will also say that, you know, as planners across the San Gabriel Valley and across the state, we've taken note of this new law. We're collaborating with other cities, I mean, other planning directors, managers, planning staff, trying to understand how we move forward with this, and their councils also are in the same, we're all in the same boat. I'll be more than happy to do that, so that way we can, I, I, we can update the council on on how the implementation of SB nine.
Thank you, Ron.
Great. Well, thank you, Ron, for that presentation.
Thank you.
So, at this moment, we move on to the Women's Club 50th member anniversary recognition, and I believe we have three three individuals to recognize. And so, I will read their biographies and then call them up here. And I believe we have Reminia Minnie Perez. She became a member of the Ballpark Women's Club in 1971. She was invited to join by Gloria Fierro. She was an active member from the beginning. A review of the yearbook from 1972 to 1973 lists her as a legislation chairman, and in 1973 to 1974, she served as a corresponding secretary and assistant yearbook editor. In 1973, she began working as a teacher's aide at Sierra Vista High School. This employment precluded her from routinely attending daytime functions, so she united with other working members and formed the club's night section. She was the night section chairman for many years and was later the secretary of the section. She was a member of the night section and attended the meetings until the section stopped meeting a few years ago. Even though she was working, she continued to be active in club activities. And she remembers serving on kitchen committees, preparing club meals, and the welfare committee, visiting homebound members and residents of old people homes. In the years after she retired from BPU SD in 1993, she served as recording secretary, veterans chairman, and spiritual values chairman. She has been a member of the scholarship committee for many years and served as chair when it was called School Issues Scholarship Student Aid. Her efforts were recognized by the club naming her an honorary life member in 2002 and Club Woman of the Year in 2009. Minnie recalls having been mentored in club procedures by Emma Mooneyham and Mary Ann Wetnick. She treasures the friendships she formed through the years and is proud of the club's accomplishments to serve the community of which she has been a member for 74 years. Although, and she remains a proud member of the Ballpark Women's Club. And I believe we have her here via telephone, is that correct? Okay, so we have Suzanne Perez. That is her daughter, and I think she's currently muted.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, okay. Well, my mother is very proud to have been a member of the Women's Club for so long. Yesterday, Claudia delivered her plaque, and it's very beautiful. She wants me to find a, a good place to hang it so that everybody that visits her home can admire it. And I thank you very much for recognizing her.
Great. And thank you for joining us. And of course, thank you to your mother for being involved in in the city and the Women's Club. I know the Women's Club does a lot of great work throughout their city. I think last year I saw they partnered with our PD for, for Toy Drive. And then, we do have Betty Nixon here, and we have Edna White. So, I would like for both of you to come up here, and then, of course, everybody else from the Women's Club. I know we see Cruz Baca here and all the other members. I believe we also have a representative from Senator, Senator Rubio's office here, so I'd like to welcome up here, here, up here as well. And then I see somebody from Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio's office as well, so I'd like to welcome her here as well. Any and all members from the Women's Club can join us. And then, so we have a plaque for Betty Nixon, and she joined the Ballpark Women's Club in 1971 and has served as chairman of international affairs, ways and means, coordinating fundraising, conservation and kindness angel 2021, and Betty moved to Ballpark in 1962 with her husband Clint Nixon, later served on the Ballpark School Board. She and her husband owned Cole's Market on the corner of Pacific and Bogart, while tirelessly fundraising for City of Hope and a member of Ballpark Chamber of Commerce. Always looking to help her community, she remains active in the club assisting in the kitchen, helping prepare the scholarship dinner, which raises money for scholarships for our students at Ballpark High School, Sierra Vista High School, and North Park High School. And I have a plaque for Betty right here. Want to read it to you real quick. It says, "With deepest gratitude and appreciation for your 50 years of service with the Ballpark Women's Club, the city council commends you for your long history of volunteerism, leadership, and contributions. Thank you for the favorable recognition you bring to our city." That's how you know it's a quality plaque. And then we have Edna White. Edna joined the Ballpark Women's Club in 1971. She had moved to Ballpark with her husband Jack and their, and their children in 1959. A few years later, Jack and Edna became involved with Eastside Little League and began a lifetime of community volunteer service. She first became snack bar chairman, and during her years with the Little League, she became close friends with many of the women who were members of the Women's Club. Even before her time with Eastside, was a volunteer in at Foster School, serving his, serving his mother for all three of her children and as PTA organizer and worker. She served on advisory committees for several programs at the high schools also. She was a founding member of the Ballpark Friends of the Library and a member of the Ballpark Historical Society. Edna loved the Women's Club and spent many years in a variety of positions. She served as president for two different terms, financial secretary and treasurer for many years, and attended many conventions and activities. "With deepest gratitude and appreciation for your 50 years of service with the Ballpark Women's Club, the city council commends you for your long history of volunteerism, leadership, and contributions. Thank you for the favorable recognition you bring to our community." Yes, yeah, yeah. And I believe your, so your husband was the first elected mayor of the city. His name is on the plaque outside of City Hall. And then I believe your, your, your daughter was the principal at Sierra Vista High School.
Yeah, that's her, right there.
No, she was actually my principal. So, when I was there, Jackie White was principal. Yes, yes. So, I did, I did get to meet your daughter. And so, we know that, I mean, there's no way to say that any of us had been touched by, by the White families in a different capacity from schools to city council as well. So, thank you. And then we can take a nice picture? Oh, and then, well, you know what? We will let our representatives.
Hello, good evening, everyone. On behalf of Senator Rubio, we would also like to give a heartfelt congratulations to Betty, Edna, and Minnie joining us virtually. This is an incredible accomplishment that you three ladies have done, really showing community engagement and you're doing your civic duty to empower and uplift your local community. So, we thank you from the bottom of our heart for all of the significances you brought in making the city of Baldwin Park that much better. Thank you so much and congratulations to you all.
Hi, good evening. I'm Veronica with Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio's office. I also want to echo the same sentiments that my colleague at the Senator's office shared. We are so proud and of these three amazing women from the Women's Club dedicating so much of their time to, to the community of Baldwin Park, to uplift, again, the residents, to provide scholarship for our students to attend college, which is an amazing, amazing effort of their part. So, again, thank you to these three amazing women, Betty Nixon, Edna White, and Minnie Perez for their unwavering dedication to the community of Baldwin Park. Thank you.
Then if we can take a, a nice picture? Anthony, can you take a picture with mine as well? And then I, I do want to And I do want to pass the floor over to our council members. I know Danny, I'm sure Danny's always good at recognizing our community, and I believe he might have been one of the people to spearhead this.
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations to Edna White, Betty Nixon, and Minnie Perez. Just want to say thank you so much for all of your work and contribution that you've done for our community. Thank you all very much.
Mayor.
Yes, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I also wanted to thank and congratulate Ms. Edna White, Ms. Betty Nixon, and Ms. Minnie Perez. They are amazing women, and I can see why they're so loved by the community. They're, they're very kind-hearted and they would do anything to help our community members, especially our students, to make sure that they get scholarships for college. So, thank you for everything that you do, and I hope you continue that, that work that you have done in our city because we really need people like you, your leadership, to, to show those that are coming in and how it is to be a good leader. Thank you for all you do.
So, thank you all for being here today. And then we appreciate all the work you do. Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Yes, I also want to recognize Ms. White, Nixon, and Minnie, Ms. Perez. I know that these, these women have, have been part of the fabric of our community and, you know, have been part of our community for many, many years, have had countless contributions to our community through your civic duties and leadership with the Women's Club. And I just wanted to also say thank you. Thank you for, you know, just dedicating your, your time and your energy to the betterment of our community, and it has been so appreciated. And I'm glad that you're all doing well. A big hug to all of you and especially to Minnie. I, I, I've always, you know, had a, had a sweet spot for Minnie. She's such a sweet person, and I, I hope that you're all doing well. So, yeah, so big hug, big hug. Take care. Thank you.
Thank you. And so, at this moment, I will open up Public Communications. Chief Deputy City Clerk, is there anybody looking to speak?
Mayor, we have three individuals who sent us emails requesting to speak this evening, and I'm going to defer over to the Deputy City Clerk for those three individuals.
The first individual will need assistance. They'll need translation in Mandarin, and our finance director, Rose Tam, will be doing the translation. Let me make the call.
You're just in the house.
好的，好的。
啊，你姓什么？请问你。
我姓王。
啊，OK。
王，王。
你就住在附近是不是？ 对，对，对，你是住在他旁边吗？
因为我是住在他的正，正前面嘛。
前面，你住在他的前面。你是姓王的，对不对？
哎，是我姓王。
哦，好，OK。啊，hi, Honorable Mayor and City Council, the speaker, uh, named Mr. Wang, said he run the proposed cannabis business thing and he said when he bought the property and he did not know that there will be a cannabis business, um, yeah, house and he's saying that's not fair and now, uh, the city allow cannabis business, uh, in their neighborhood and near where he purchased the property. OK, continue,啊啊，继续吧王先生。
好的。
Mr. Wang said he wish the elected official and will do something fair and consider the health of the people live around that area and mainly consider the impact to the young children. 王先生，你还想讲什么？ 明白。哦，OK。Uh, Mr. Wang said, uh, there is also a childcare facility and hospital near that facility and he wish the officials will reconsider the location of the... 好，王先生，我帮你翻译完了。你，你意思是说？
好，谢谢。
OK。
再见。
And, uh, Mr. Wang said, and please reconsider in the location and why the city allow, is in a very condensed residential area, why don't they find a place that not too close to the residential area? Thank you.
Our next caller is Lisa Jang.
OK, I vote against that. The cannabis sanctuary should not set up in the hiding popular things area. This decision will have a big impact on our community safety and resident health. We don't want to get our elementary school and kindergarten cost the beauty because we wish give children a safe living environment. And last one, I'm afraid, if in the future we want to sell a property, nobody will show interest because it is next to the this type of building. That's it. Thank you so much.
And the next speaker is Kiana Martinez. Kiana, this is, regarding your request.
So I would like to comment on the second reading of the rent control ordinance. So, uh, we, we understand, uh, with People United of Balden Park, we understand that state law prevents, uh, certain number to increases for single-family homes, condos, and housing units built after nineteen eighty-five. Although we know that, you know, the, the city can provide some just cause protect, uh, protection for all of the units, all types of units if they would like to for just cause protection. And so we're hoping that they'll still, um, uh, push that forward. And so, of course, um, rent control and eviction protections provide stability to low-income units and it allows them to report housing issues and retaliatory conduct by their landlords without fearing increase, rent increases, or evictions. Um, it also provides, uh, of course, uh, low-income tenants, uh, stability and allowing them to stay in our neighborhood, in our local community. And there are, um, anti-rent gouging laws that prohibit large rent increases, but it's still significant amounts. It could be for the average rent, it could be, um, two, like, between, uh, more than one hundred dollars, it could be even more than two hundred dollars. Um, and that's what our low-income residents cannot afford. And landlords are legally obligated to provide habitable homes to their tenants. And so rent, rent control is not an excuse for landlords not to hold up their end of the contract as our people were suggesting. Um, and so it's important that, uh, we keep our units habitable and not only that, but, um, we remember that landlords are missing profits throughout decades and decades as well. And so, um, there, there is enough to keep our, our families safe. Um, and so we ask that y'all, um, continue to push that forward within the applicable laws as we can for the state of California. Um, thank you for your time.
Mayor, those are all the calls. We do have speakers who submitted requests to speak. Catherine Lozier from our public library.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, community partners, and fellow community members. The L.A. County Library is pleased to announce that the California State Library has provided access to all Californians on some databases for a limited time. The four databases that we'll be offering through our digital library include Coursera, which is, uh, college-level classes led by top colleges such, such as Yale and Stanford and companies such as IBM and Google. While learners are not able to earn degrees through the program, they can learn, uh, earn certificates of completion. We also have Skillshare, which is a, uh, video-led training courses, including topics of animation, cooking, free, uh, fine arts, web development, as well as entrepreneurship and freelancing, leadership and management, and, uh, lifestyle and productivity courses. For those older adults who also want to learn, we have Get Set Up, which is designed for and contributed by older adults. And then for those who might have no, low or limited technology skills, we have North Star Digital Literacy, which is a learning platform that has instructor-led curriculum, self-learning curriculum, and then assessments for those who want to improve their literacy skills. And then this December, we also have a special virtual program series. It's called Stories on Skin. It's learning about L.A. County's diverse immigrant community through one of the most personal art forms of tattoos. For the next three Saturdays, they'll be programming. This upcoming Saturday, December fourth, at eleven thirty, we have a program on Chicano Tattoo Traditions. On Saturday, December eleventh, at eleven thirty, we have tattooing the African diaspora. And then on December eighteenth, at one P.M., we have a program on Samoan tattoo and Japanese, uh, rezumi. And I apologize if I pronounce those incorrectly, but it's, it's a program series I'm very much interested in and I hope you all can join us virtually. Thank you so much and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Next is Beatriz Sandoval and she does require an interpreter.
Buenas noches, miembros of the Consilio y comunidad de Baldon Park. Uh, mi nombre es Beatriz Sandoval. Soy parte de la organización de LA Voice y soy un miembro de la comunidad, eh, lidiando con varios asuntos. Y uno de ellos me trajo aquí esta noche en varias reuniones de estudio que hemos tenido con la comunidad, de varios vecinos de nuestra comunidad. Hemos tenido vecinos del edificio recientemente construido con el nombre de ROM, donde en muchas ocasiones, yo sé que la concejal García habla con mucho orgullo de haber construido este edificio asequible para las familias de Baldon Park. Pues la mala noticia es que no es asequible, ni los vecinos de este edificio son tratados con respeto y dignidad.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Beatriz Sandoval and I am, uh, good evening to the members of the council and the community of Baldon Park. I am a member of the LA Voice. I am a member of the community dealing with different issues. One of these issues was, um, the meeting with the community that we had and which the neighbors have expressed their, uh, they have expressed their dissatisfaction and frustration with one of these buildings built by the ROM company. Monica García has said that she, how proud she is of this building, but I have bad news. These buildings are not affordable nor are they, um, accessible to members of the community.
Un par de personas de la tercera edad muy angustiadas han venido a nuestras reuniones a hablar de la falta de asequibilidad. Para ellos es muy angustiante tener un salario fijo o un ingreso fijo y ya no poder alcanzar el costo de la renta que les ha ido aumentando, eh, por cada año. Este, nunca le quiero pedir a la concejal Mónica que no me contestes. Le quiero pedir que vaya y visite a estos vecinos y hable con ellos y después puede venir con hechos a darnos una explicación de para quién es asequible este edificio.
Uh, we have quite a few, um, residents, uh, people who are in the, and the, members of the, uh, senior citizens who have no access and have no means to be able to pay or afford this because they were, live with fixed incomes and they're not able to pay these high rents that these people are asking for. Um, I'm addressing to a councilperson Blanca. She doesn't need to respond to me, but I'm asking her, please, to reach these people and to talk to them to see what they really need.
I quiero aclarar que la señorita Monica García, y con mucho respeto le pido esto, no es nada personal. Y pasando a la falta de asequibilidad, creo que el tema número siete en la agenda, que es la segunda lectura de, de la orden catorce seis seis, pues la verdad que si aprueban esta orden van a traer varias soluciones. Una de ellas va a dar estabilidad a las personas que viven cheque a cheque, que les, lo cual les va a permitir tener más certeza de que pueden permanecer en su vecindario y seguir contribuyendo a su comunidad.
The other issue is, I will, I also mentioned this to Ms. Monica García. I don't want, I'm not attacking her. This, this is nothing personal. But I just want to mention that this, uh, project, uh, creates lack of accessibility. And then in regards to issue number seven, and the second reading of number seven in regards to that, uh, the law, the fourteen sixty-six, this would bring up definite solutions. This would provide stability to these people, especially to the people who are leaving nowadays from check to check.
También esta orden va a dar confianza de informar problemas de la vivienda o represarias por parte de los propietarios sin tener el miedo a que su renta sea incrementada, el costo de su vivienda sea incrementada, o que sufran de alguna amenaza de desalojos.
Also, this ordinance will create trust in the, from the people because they will be allowed to access, uh, to information and, um, their, the, 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 the increment in the cost of living will be monitored and, um, uh, this will be provide them more stability.
Como por ejemplo la señora Sotelo, que pasó varios veranos sin aire acondicionado. Pueden ustedes imaginarse vivir en un segundo piso con más de cien grados de temperatura, eh, del clima y estar enferma con una persona más de edad que ella, que era su mamá. Y la señora no cambió el aire acondicionado por mucho tiempo hasta esperarse que hubiera una especial o una oferta de aires acondicionados. ¿Pueden ustedes imaginarse en esa temperatura y vivir en esas condiciones?
Perdón, su tiempo ha terminado.
Uh, I'm gonna give a specific example. Mrs. Sotelo, who was for a longest time living without air conditioning. She was experiencing temperatures of a hundred degrees living on a second story with an, with a lady who's older than her, her sick mother, who was exposed to those conditions. And, uh, the, the landlord in the meantime was waiting for a special to come out in the market so that she can buy and replace the air conditioning. Can you imagine living under those conditions? Thank you.
Gracias, y espero que aprueben esta segunda lectura de la moción catorce sesenta y seis.
Thank you and I hope you approve this second reading of the project fourteen sixty-six.
Thank you. Next is Sochi Escalante, who will also need an interpreter.
Buenas noches, señor alcalde y miembro del Consilio. Mi nombre es Sochi Escalante. Soy una residente de Baldon Park por más de veintiocho años. Y he sido voluntaria en el distrito, he sido voluntaria en nuestra comunidad y actualmente soy líder comunitaria con LA Voice. En estos casi treinta años fui dueña de casa. Desgraciadamente, perdimos la casa en el dos mil ocho. Y ya tenemos casi trece años como inquilina de una casa. Por lo cual, tenemos una relación muy buena con el... de una casa, por lo cual tenemos una relación muy buena con el dueño de la casa. Yo la cuido como si fuera mía, porque es una responsabilidad como inquilina tener la propiedad en buen estado.
Good evening. My name is Sochi Lescalante, and I'm a resident of the city of Baldwin Park. I've been in Baldwin Park for 28 years, and I've been involved in volunteer work with the district, and I'm also a leader with LA Voice. I've been here for almost 30 years, and I've been the owner of a property, but we lost it in 2008. And then the last 13 years I've been a tenant, paying rent at a property where we have very good relationship with the landlord. I take good care of the house as if it was mine.
Eso no ha evitado que el dueño de la propiedad nos haya subido la renta, y el último incremento de nuestra renta fue hace cuatro meses, con 200 dólares, y que viene siendo más del 10% de lo que está permitido. Quiero decir que afortunadamente la crisis económica no es para todo, pero desafortunadamente para nosotros sí, porque somos de la clase trabajadora, en la cual nuestros ingresos no han subido en los últimos cuatro años. Son ingresos fijos.
Unfortunately, that hasn't stopped the landlord to increase the rent. In the last four months, the landlord has increased the rent in amount of $200, which is over 10%, and unlucky for us, we have not been able to get salary raises accordingly to those raises.
Agradecería al consejo que voten por algo justo. Para todas las familias garantamos casas en esta ciudad, ya que los incrementos podrían forzarnos a dejar esa ciudad por la que hemos trabajado tanto. Y eso haría que muchas familias tuvieran la oportunidad de seguir aquí en esta ciudad, no tanto por los incrementos en sí, sino porque ya como tantos años que tenemos viviendo en esta ciudad, ya tenemos cariño, ya le tenemos amor a esta ciudad. Por tanto, trabajo que hemos hecho, quizá es por eso que nosotros, al menos en mí, en mi persona, daría esa posibilidad. No tendría para mí la posibilidad de dejar esa ciudad solamente por el incremento de las rentas. Se me hace que ustedes tienen la oportunidad de que todas aquellas personas que están matallando con el pago de sus rentas en sus casas, sobre todo, tengan la seguridad de que nuestro consejo está trabajando para mantener a esas familias dentro de la ciudad. Muchísimas gracias por su atención.
I hope that the council will do the justice so that the families will afford their rent and they will stay in this city, so that the families can remain in the city, and not only because there's not gonna be a rent increase, but also because we love the city. We all love the city for which we have done and on which we have worked so much, and you have the opportunity to create this situation by allowing or addressing correctly the rate increase situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Abel. He will speak on homeless, graffiti, and trash.
Hi, good evening. My name is Abel, living in Baldwin Park for 40 years, business owner for 40 years. My complaint is about the graffiti and homeless is still the same in the same area. You are using the wrong homeless, the homeless ones we need to pick up are still there. You need to investigate more who's the guy who need to be in the little houses, because those guys are destroying the city. Too much graffiti, too much trash, you have to run there, and I can't handle this no more, and I don't know why can you do it? Oh, give me the paint, I paint, I write graffiti. Right here in Merced, I'm Baldwin Bar, we have too many drugs, they sell drugs over there. Every day I fight the little guys, they are the guys riding the bicycle and give it to that guy the drugs. I don't know why you don't, the police don't pay attention to that. They are getting worse and worse, the city. When I got the police to go to my place, the officer ignored me. They said they can't do nothing about the people. There only one officer take care of my complaint, but not all of them. Okay, and what can we do? Can you solve these problems? Rules, about the rules too, the rules, you have to put more money in the rules, too much, too many walls everywhere, giving maintenance to the rules. And I think that's it. I hope you do this, solve this problem possible, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, those are all the written requests we received.
Great, thank you. So at this moment, anybody who would like to speak who didn't fill out the card may do so.
Good evening. Looks like the chief got a little younger tonight, but one of the complaints I have, and we need council help on, is you have a contractor that's Royal Coaches towing that constantly violates parking laws on their street. There's a no parking on both sides of the street because they built out to the street with walls. So they had to put up by the fire department a turnaround, and they had to have no parking. They continually violate this. They do it on the weekends, they do it in the evenings, they'll park three trucks on the opposite side of the road. If somebody comes around that corner fast, they'll head dead on into their trucks. They continually do it, and we need to put something to it. If we have a licensed contractor for the city, we should be able to enforce that they abide by the city rules and regulations, and that's what I'm asking the councils help on. The second thing is, is the vendors. I know we're bringing up a sore subject again, but checking with the law and everything else, we can't sue the city for not violating with the vendors right now and citing them, but what we can do is everybody that I've talked to that own businesses in the city cannot pay their city license until you're going to make it fair for everybody. So starting in January, everybody, whenever their licenses are due, and the businesses that I've talked to and more that I will talk to, we just won't pay our license until the city fines us, and when the city fines us for not paying the license, then we can sue the city and force you to do an ordinance that will, what you have in place now, and make these vendors get their license and insurance if they're going to do work in this city. We pay our dues here, and you should make these people pay theirs. I don't care what their problems are. You don't care what our problems are when we come to the city and say, I've got no money to pay my license. Oh, well, we'll help you out, we'll give you money. Nobody's ever done that. So why are we doing it for these people? And then they block the sidewalks. We spend all this money on the corners of the sidewalks to have handicap for wheelchairs. Now, how are wheelchairs gonna go down the sidewalk when you have vendors sitting in the middle of the sidewalk? It's not fair. The restaurants here support Baldwin Park with tax money and with license. You don't, you're not backing them up. You're allowing vendors to come in here illegally. You have this ordinance. Enforce it. Get it done so that everybody is equal, not separate. So we want to see that the city in January starts doing what they should have been doing that's on the books now. Enforce the law, make the people get it, find a place. If you want these vendors to be somewhere, fine, put them somewhere, but you don't block sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's, is there anybody else looking to speak?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Mario Maciel, planning commissioner, just wanted to come restate that I'm in favor of putting in this rent control ordinance that's gonna help a lot of people out. I have a neighbor that currently has gotten a notice that his rent will be going up in January by 14%, and this is the part that we need to realize that for some people, it's just not doable. It's not doable. I'm looking at it in my perspective. If my rent gets increased by 14%, I'm looking at another $300 increase, 2,500 for a three-bedroom house. This is the part that we need to put into perspective, that a working-class citizen, when they get a raise, do they get a 14% increase on their pay? We don't. If anything, we're looking at a 3% raise on your paycheck, if you get one, but there's been so many years of not getting pay increases that, you know, you gotta put that into perspective also. But please, do the right thing, and let's get this moving so that people can understand it and feel safe and secure here in Baldwin Park, and not be disposed and pushed out of the city. Thank you.
Great, is there anybody else looking to speak? Not at this moment. I will move to close public communication. You know, we can kind of touch on these subjects real quick. So street vending, Ben, I know I mentioned last time, I think January should be doable. You know, that we've been kind of monitoring what Elmont is doing, and I think that is the most fair thing, where we, the streets open for everybody, but we allow people the opportunity to get a permit and get their health permit license, which is one of the biggest obstacles in street vending, and I think we meet everybody in the middle ground, not hurting anybody, but also not hurting anybody above anybody else. You know, this thing about local businesses, and I agree, right, everybody has to follow the rules, so that's something that we want to keep up. You know, that's not the first instance of a local business kind of jumping over the gun. I know that there's a local business in the downtown area that has kind of squatted on public land. That's another issue, but...
Mayor?
Yes.
Can't hear you.
Oh, sorry, my microphone's late, too far away. But, so, yes, I agree, everybody should be following the rules, and we cannot be doing one thing for the other. To me, it was just moratorium, which is perfectly fine. We've done it for long enough, and we have an idea to be able to follow and implement, and that's what we should do after the holidays, which is after this month. And then, of course, you know, hitting on the local business, and everybody should be following the same rules, and that's, you know, there's no, there's no disagreements there. I know somebody talked about the homelessness. Homelessness is one of the most difficult efforts to take on, which I'm proud to say the city has taken on, and we're moving at a tremendous speed, and I think we really are setting the example for the San Gabriel Valley and everybody else. We've been capturing funds and grants, and we're on track to capture a lot more. So for anybody who's not aware, homelessness goes beyond local jurisdiction, and it hits, it goes all the way to the Supreme Court, which the Supreme Court has upheld certain rights. That's one of the things that makes it difficult to enforce things that people would like or things like that. Personally, I am following along with the Supreme Court, and I am following what Los Angeles is doing, trying to keep an eye on best practices, and, you know, as soon as we see that there's something reasonable to apply as well, we will do it as well. So those are all my comments to all of you, and if any council members have any comments to make, I will open up the floor to them.
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, mayor. First of all, I want to thank everybody that came up to speak. It is very important to hear your concerns that are going around our city. First of all, to Ms. Sandoval's comment, if we can look into what's going on at ROM and those tenants that she spoke about, so we can have staff members look into that. In regards to Sochi Lescalante, Ben, if we can contact the owner of that property, because four months ago, that rent increase was illegal and it still is, so if you can find that information out and work with Sochi, please. Abel, regarding the homeless, I understand completely what you're talking about. I actually did a walk through that area behind Jack in the Box where all the graffiti and the trash is, and there is homeless in that section that belongs to the Caltrans. So do know that we are working with Caltrans. Caltrans is not making it easy for the city to get that cleaned up because we are not allowed to go in there because of safety, but know, Abel, that we are working, and I know it was Officer Winter that's always out there helping you, and I went out there with him, so we are working on that to get Caltrans to come out there and clean it up and to come out on a scheduled basis. Mr. Tuttle, in regard to Royal Coaches, we need to go look at what's going on in that area, if they are violating the codes there and parking where they shouldn't be parked, we need to look into that, so if our police department can look into that, please. And in regards to the vendors, be assured that we are working on solving this problem. I, like you, am not happy with the situation because I do see vendors everywhere, they are blocking, you mentioned a very good thing about blocking the walkways, so now people are not being able to access the walkway if they're on a wheelchair or what have you. So it is an issue. It is an issue that they are not paying fees when all of our other businesses have to pay the fees. I completely agree with you, but do know that we are working on that, and it will be solved by January, no later, we hope. So again, those are my comments for those of you that spoke, and thank you again for speaking up.
Thank you for that, Mayor Protem. Is there anybody else looking to comment? If not, thank you, everybody, for coming to the council meeting and staying involved. So at this moment, we will move to the consent calendar. Is there any items council is looking to pull? And I do want to pull item number three, and I believe it was item number six.
I wanted to put three and seven, but you got number three. I'll comment after you do, mayor.
Seven? Is there anybody else?
No.
Any other items? I will make a motion to pass items one through eight, excluding item number seven, number six, and number three. Can I get a second?
Second.
Great, thank you for that. City clerk, rule call, please.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniel, sorry, Daniel Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Monica García?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Alejandra Avila?
Yes.
And councilmember Paul Hernandez. Who's not on, then? Okay. Motion passes.
Great, thank you for that. So at this moment, we move to item number three, and this was important because, I mean, for the last couple of years, been in constant dialogue, right? And so we hear a lot about this. You know, I remember, I might have miscalculated, but I recall when we were going through the money to find out how much money we actually had in liquid, this is how we found out that there was a big loan to ROM, which I think a lot of us weren't aware of. Maybe it's just because we weren't around at the time that it happened. But it was a good thing because now we are making sure that we're a little bit more up to date on our money and figuring out how much is liquid so that we can continue moving with our housing processes. So, I mean, the biggest thing is that, so looking at this paper, the ROM cost as loans from the city, the city lent ROM $7,470,000, and is expecting a $1.2 million return in interest, but the terms of the loan are 55 years. So, you know, 55 years for $7 million, $7.5 million, it seems excessive to me. I don't understand, I wasn't there, you know, but keep in mind that when we purchased the Garvey site, we expected to be able to pay ourselves $2.2 million in three years' time over the loan that we gave ourselves. So also, I see that these are a lot of, these are a lot of deferments, they're not even loans, so, you know, like the parking fee, the quimby fees, all of the fees that are supposed to help impact this project haven't been paid up to date, and then the biggest concern is how are we measuring how we're getting this money back? So I'm aware that we've received checks that vary from $100,000 to close to $500,000, and it's based on how much money is left over after operations, but this is a, from my understanding, this is a project that has yearly annual rent increases, and it is, it is without vacancy year-round. So I'm not entirely sure I'm understanding how rates could fluctuate, or how the cost can fluctuate, or anything else can fluctuate, to the point where we're, you know, it's such a volatile amount of the check. And then are we verifying that they are paying the correct amount that they should be paying for that year, or are we just taking the check and calling it okay?
Mayor?
Thank you, mayor.
Yes. Mayor, the the payments do come from the company. We do have the ability to inspect their books, do a type of audit. Though we haven't done that to date, but that is something. The finance department would probably take the lead in doing some sort of audit. Of their of their books to verify the. You know, if the payments that are being made through the residual receipts loan are. Essentially accurate and and honest.
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Protem.
I'm going to comment on this since I was also going to pull it, but you made the exact comments that that I meant to. To make about this. The interesting thing about this loan is that. It was executed December fifth of twenty fifteen. And based on this chart that I'm looking at. On four one, they should they should have made a payment, four one twenty eighteen. Of two hundred and sixty-five thousand and thirty-two, and according to this chart, there was nothing made. The first payment. Was made on four one twenty nineteen for three hundred and sixty-five, nine hundred and sixty-four. It's just interesting how, I mean, I've never myself borrowed. Gotten a loan that. I don't have to pay anything until seven years later. Very interesting how this loan was executed and. Who put this loan together and it just doesn't make any sense. Ben did touch up on inspecting the books. When was the last time that? That you did inspect the books, Ben? Do you recall? I know it's something before your time, but you know when that was done?
If it's hard to hear you, council member, but if you if the question was have. Has my, has the community or the city essentially inspected the the books and audited the numbers? I don't believe that's been done to date, so it is something available to us. And we would have to, you know, undergo that. Assignment, that task at our own expense to do so. So that is something available to us.
And we plan to do it. We plan to do the the verification. Call it an audit, but it's definitely a verification.
Okay, and I just wanted to make sure the public was aware of this loan that Rome received because I'm sure, because we weren't aware of it. As the mayor said, we thought we had so much money. To be able to use, but apparently we didn't. We ended up now, I didn't know we were a loan company either because we ended up loaning money to Rome. To get that project done. Like the mayor said, again. They increase the rent every year, but yet they're not able to make payments here. It's a fifty-five-year loan. It's very interesting and I think it's important that the community know. What type of. Contract was written up for this Rome company. So I I honestly don't feel that. It was a contract that was fair to our city or to our community. And now we're having to pay. For or find money that we thought we had in order for us to purchase properties that we actually need at this time. That's all the comment I had on that, Mayor. Thank you. I hope our community members get a copy of this document so they can see the numbers that I'm looking at.
And I have a quick question, Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember, sorry, Damian. Councilmember Damian, you're muted.
Sorry about that. I'm looking at the Rome total loan schedule, which is also known as an amortization schedule. Normally, when you issue a loan, especially something like this that was on a simple annual interest. Like was mentioned that a two point seven five for a fifty-five-year term. Usually, when you provide an amortization schedule like this, it'll give you. As you can see there, the the monthly payments that you make, starting on or yearly payments that you make. Starting with year one. Four one twenty eighteen, and it'll tell you that the payment. The minimum amount of the payment was two hundred and sixty-five thousand thirty-two dollars. And it'll break it down as to what amount will go to principal, fifty-nine thousand six oh seven. And then the amount that would go to interest of two hundred and five thousand. But what I'm not understanding is why was this even provided when? It's basically stating that. The loan payments to the city are structured on a residual receipts basis. Which means that the amount of the payment would be based. On the amount available to the developer after meeting the operating expenses. So we're not really, in a sense, going off the amortization schedule. We're going off of the fact of the numbers. That Rome is providing. After their their receipts, so. We have, this loan was was done in twenty fifteen. We're going, what, six, seven years now? That this loan has been provided and we've never bothered to check the books. After looking at a schedule that we didn't receive a payment in twenty eighteen. We received a payment of three sixty, three hundred and sixty-five thousand in twenty nineteen. We received nothing in twenty twenty. And then we received a hundred and thirty-seven thousand in twenty twenty-one. And we're projected to receive five hundred and seventy-six thousand four ninety-eight. In April of twenty twenty-two. How are we making sure that these numbers are accurate? Why are we just accepting a payment without verifying? You know, that that this is, in fact. What was left over to the developer. I mean, as it is, they got a very lucrative. Loan. I mean, I wish that, you know. We can give home loans to our residents like this. Which I know is impossible, but. You know, we need to start making sure that we are. We're doing our due diligence and we're not just basically saying, hey, you know what? This is the check that we received. Based on their numbers. You know, we have to do our due diligence here because. We're talking about over seven, almost seven point five million dollars. That we could have used. To acquire other properties, which we were planning to do. Because we were under the impression that we had over ten million dollars like it was indicated to us. When in fact, we didn't have that amount of money. So, again, this is something that we need to really look into into the numbers and not just accept. What it is that they're giving us without. Having them give us a justification for this. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Versio.
Okay, thank you. So. Well, where do I begin? First of all, I think that Councilmember Damian, you know, made an interesting comment in that. This is money that this current council wanted to use to purchase properties and. Create affordable housing. No different than the previous council that used. Resources that were available. To promote affordable housing. And the Rome project came at a time. When the city had surplus properties. But didn't have a lot of. Resources like we had in the in past years, like with Community Redevelopment Agency money. In the past, we used. CRA, Community Redevelopment Agency Funds, to help. Offset costs. And promote investment in our community. That's what CRA was designed for. And that's how we used it in the city, but the CRA was eliminated. I would say somewhere in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven by the state of California, and so that forced us. To look at new ways to fund these types of. Investments in our community. At the time, the previous council felt that the investment should be in affordable housing. And so, no different than what we were trying to do here, right? By acquiring these properties for affordable housing. That's what we did. With the Rome project to create seventy-one units. And we received a thousand applications for that project. So clearly, the need is there. A few months ago, we heard from. Residents in that building who have been positively impacted. We heard from dozens of residents. And, you know, I I'm very proud that. We were able to provide that kind of housing. So, you know, that's, that was a council priority in the past, no different than. The council priority now. You know, to use that same funding resource. To acquire properties and promote affordable housing. Maybe a different approach. But no different. Second, this is why it's so important for us to do due diligence. Before we start, you know, spending money, before we start making plans. And that's why I was asking from the beginning. For our. Staff to provide briefings on exactly. What do we have available for any funding? You know, for housing. Rather than, oh, you know, let's just go out and shop. I think I used an analogy of. I love to shop at Nordstrom, and if I could run through that store and just grab, you know, whatever, whatever appealed to me, I would do it. But before I do that, I gotta know how much money is in the bank? Can I afford that? What's the plan? And by the end of the day, after all my shopping. Are the pieces even gonna match? So, you know, there's some strategy, there's a lot of research, there's due diligence that needs to happen. And I I make that, you know, analogy jokingly, but. You know, it's it simplifies it, right? So this is why, early on in the process, when we were looking at acquiring properties, I was asking for a full briefing. So that we knew exactly what we were stepping into. And that's what I encourage, you know, at every. Policy decision, project decision that we do. Moving forward. My question for Rose is, Rose, two questions, actually. One. Can you tell me a little bit about that loan? And second, can you tell us why? You know, if if Rome is supposed to be. Providing payment. According to their agreement, can you tell us a little bit about why? Or have they, has there been any lapse in that? Can you tell us a little bit about that?
This loan is issued based on a fixed interest rate. Two point seven five percent. And. As stated in the agreement. And the developer will pay the city. After they apply all the receipts to their expenses, cover their expenses. Then the residual. Money will be sent to the city. It, that's why it will be various. For example, in this current year. They make five hundred seventy-six thousand dollars. Compared to the prior year, hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars. And. It it depends and it's not, we are not going to make, get a fixed. Payment. I am not so sure if I answer your question.
Yes, you answered the second question. My first question is more along the lines of. The funds, the quote-unquote loan to Rome. Can you tell us what fund that came from specifically?
Yes, and the loan. Came out from. Various funds. For example, and the land. The land was originally under the Loma Housing Fund. So when we provided the land. And it's the value was appraised at two point one six million at that time. That's why the loan become two point one six million under the Loma Housing Fund. Also, the parking fees. Goes to the Loma Housing Fund. Since it attached to the land. And also, the impact fee for. Hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars, since the impact fee is a general. Fund revenue. This. Was recorded under the general fund. And then the impact fee and flood control fee. They related to. The. Gas tax fund and like the street fund. And the, that's why the hundred twenty-two thousand dollar. Was recorded under that fund. And also. We have a. Fee related. To the public R and Quimby fee as required by the city with this project. The impact fee and public and Quimby fee sum up to four hundred seventy-eight thousand dollar. And it was recorded under. Fund three, two, three, four, which is the park Quimby fee.
So, so Rose, let me stop you there.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. What's important, I think, to point out. Is are the fees attached to the land? And so, I want the council here to understand. That. These fees were attached to the public. Asset of that land. It's, they were not monies that were in a fund. Available to go and acquire other properties. Those were.
Yes. Those are the fees that if anybody come to the city to build projects. And they would have to pay the city fees. Instead, they pay it upfront. And. The city treated this as a loan to work with the developers. And have them pay back the city in the future years.
Right.
You're right, it's not money that we give, gave to the developers. They are fees that the developer. Should have paid the city, but the city. Were working with them, have this fee. Put in a loan format, have them pay in the future years.
Okay, Rose, so thank you for that. And I I really want this council to understand that. First of all. There were, this was a, this was a publicly, this was a city-owned lot. Okay, that was a city-owned asset. That we leveraged. For the development of this affordable project. It wasn't money that was liquid in an account somewhere that we gave to the developer. I think that's really important to understand, and that's why I highly encourage. That we understand things before we proceed with, you know. Whatever, whatever decision-making that occurs because. This is a city-owned property that had value. And we use that value to incorporate it into. A a project so that it would pencil out, and that project was affordable housing. Seventy-one units of low, very low and moderate income. Moderate income means that it's for workforce housing. That means that it's for teachers, for entry-level police officers, for nurses. Yeah, that's gonna be a higher income bracket than low and very low income, but you know what? There's a need for that. And so. When this project was proposed, it was proposed as a low and very low project. I asked for moderate income. Why? Because there is a need in this community for moderate income workforce housing. And workforce housing is hard to get. So. You know, it's easy for us to sit here and to say, oh, this and that and that and this. But actually, if you go back and you really truly understand how this transaction came to be, you'll understand. That this was not money sitting in a fund somewhere that could be used for to acquire properties in the future. This was actually. Oh, you know, assets that the city owned, that the city leveraged. So that this project could be developed. And what you're hearing Rose say, and I wasn't asking any leading questions. I was just asking her to answer my questions. What we're hearing her say is that. The land value and the fees, the development fees that were attached to that. Were packaged in a way where it was issued as a loan. Okay, so we gotta be careful. We just, we gotta understand more. But all of that said, it goes back to, at the time, it was a council priority, no different. Than the council priorities of today. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Great, thanks. So I just, I want to clarify whether it was given to them as land or money. It's been converted into owed. Been converted into owed money. So the city is owed millions of dollars. So, like I said earlier, how do we justify a fifty-five-year loan for seven point five million dollars? Only to make a million. You know, the the city bent over backwards for them. That is its own specific plan. It's not even part of the downtown. It's denser than any other part, project in the city. So there's, they got a lot of freebies. There are, you know, all these impact fees, they're impact fees. They're supposed to help the city mitigate the impacts that new development has. Yet we waived them for them and deferred them, and now we're gonna wait fifty-five years. So it's been known on the council, it's been known on the city. That the city never has any money for projects. That's what we hear all the time. It doesn't matter whether it's PD, Public Works, Community Development. The city never has any money, any expendable money. So how do we justify a fifty-five-year loan for seven million dollars? And I, as I said before, that is, it's owed money, whether it was land back then or whatever. Looking at, looking at it now, the city probably lost out because. A downtown-specific plan. the downtown-specific plan, property is probably worth more now than it was back then. Um, also, that's not the point. I think we're kind of painting the current council as reckless in spending, and that's just not true. The council was told multiple times that we had over $12 million to spend by staff. I think the real question is, why have we been approving, not we, but why has the previous council had been approving these budgets where we show that we have all this money, which we won't have until, in 55 years? So that's, to me, that's the irresponsible portion. Because I know that council turns around and tells everybody that the books look great, that we have all this money, that we're, that we're in great shape. And so now you look at it, we don't have this money, it doesn't exist. It's not even liquid. It's, I could write a, I could write a number on these books and say that we have it. And it's, it's not, it's not there. So if it's not liquid, we don't have it. And so for the next 55 years, what you're telling me is that we would have been passing these proposed budgets, telling everybody that we had $12 million in the bank, year after year, even though we don't have it. So that's, that's what's concerning to us, that there's millions of dollars that were lent out, but they're not showing that in the books. We're showing it as if we had a liquid. And then we're lying, we're not just lying to ourselves, we're lying to the community. So when we pass these budgets, it's important to know. We had just passed the budget before we started expenditures. We told, we were told that we had $12 million. The council spent $1.4 million on the, on the torch project with Habitat for Humanity, and it's spent another $2.2 million on what will soon become a family shelter. That's not even half of $12 million. And we ran out of money. That's when we had to take a, a loan out of a different account. That is an issue, and that's not on this council. That's what's been being told to everybody for years. So this idea that we weren't doing our due diligence is just false. That's, that's where the issues are coming out. It's not about, we're aware of what was given, we're looking at the paper. At the end of the day, the money is owed. We gave a 55-year loan. The city is owed over $6 million, $7 million. And we need to do our due diligence and make sure that people are paying back the money, uh, honestly, and, and it shouldn't be an issue. These, we should be able to check Rome's books, and that's it. And as for, you know, the affordability, I mean, affordable is such a vague word, and I've always said it. There's a senior couple that spends a, a lot of time at the senior center, and they don't live here anymore because they got priced out of the Rome project. And now they live in West Covina. So now that senior couple is driving all the way from West Covina here. Because that's where they found actual affordable housing that meets their needs. So again, it's not about expenditures and spending. The city never went out and spent recklessly. The city was told that we had this much money and we don't have it. That's the problem. The second problem is that we've been passing budgets this way for years on end. And what I mean, we, I mean the council in general, not myself.
Mayor? I don't wanna go on and on, but um, really quick, I think it's, it's important, okay, the lesson learned here is whenever the city says that it has assets, or you know, it accounts for assets, we need to understand what funds are we talking about? Are they restricted? Are they unrestricted? Are they liquid? Are they, you know, in what format? And that's why I was asking for a full briefing from staff. It's one thing for staff to say, yes, we have $12 million in um, you know, what, in housing assets. It's another thing for us to really ask for a full briefing. And so that's, that, I think we can all say that, you know, we'll be better off um, moving forward, having under- understood that and learned that lesson. Um, second, I, I really just wanna reiterate that the, the, you know, millions of dollars that, that, that was attached to the land. It was not a loan that was taken out of a fund and given to a developer. Um, and I just hope that that comes across, you know, more clearly. And that's all. I, I don't really wanna go in circles about it.
Mayor, if I just may interject really quick.
Great, uh, yes, Councilmember Damian.
So just a couple of things. Number one, I wanna just clarify that I am very well aware of where this money came from, and that it was put into a loan for Rome. You know, the, the breakdown is here. There was a land acquisition of 2.16 million, the deferred fees, and then the construction that came out of the home funds. However, when we were told that we had those $10 to $12 million, we were giving a list of properties to be able to give direction to saw after, based on the fact that we had those $10 to $12 million to choose from. That's what it was told to us, that we were able to use that money for those property acquisitions, when it turned out that we didn't have that money. But my thing is, going back to this, it's, it's not that I'm speaking just, just to speak. I'm speaking in the, in the reference of a loan. This is a loan, whether they got, you know, $2 million from one fund and $2 million from another. The end of the day, everything was totaled up. It was a four, almost a $7.5 million loan. If it was liquid or not, it doesn't matter. It was in form of an asset. It was still a loan. My concern is that we gave them a very generous loan of 2.75% interest rate at a 55-year loan term. Where are we making our money from? Now, it says here, parking, $2.64 million. What parking is this? Is this a parking structure? Are we making any money from that? Because from what I am a, a, aware of, that parking structure was built out of asset forfeiture money. So if that is the case, why are we allowing Rome tenants to use it? So this is where I come back to, where are we doing our due diligence? That's my whole thing. Where are the due diligence that we're supposed to be doing on this? Not the fact of how they packaged this deal to structure it, to make sure that they were gonna make it feasible for Rome to be able to develop and construct this development. That's what they did. They structured it in a way to where they were gonna be able to facilitate this development. But at the end of the day, this is a loan that we are now uh, in here for 55 years at a 2.75 rate. But I am very well aware of how the funding came in. Whether it was liquid or not, this is still a loan that we are owed. And I believe that we should look into the books because it's been six, seven years since this contract was drafted. And we really have no clarification as to how much money they are really profiting off of this project.
Great, thank you. So, at this moment, I will make a motion to receive and accept the, uh, receive, accept and file the report. Can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, City Clerk, roll call please.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Um, Mayor Emmanuel Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniel Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez? We take it he's just absent, right? Okay. Um, um, Mayor Protem, Alejandro Avila?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Great, thank you. Then I, I did also pull item number six, and I think it's important to talk about, uh, the homeless cohort. I think it's also known as a tri-city effort, where Ballin Park teams up with El Monte and South El Monte. Uh, you know, the tiny homes was, in my opinion, one of the biggest successes that's come out of Ballin Park. We've, we're leading the way, uh, in the way we do things. We're not only leading the way, we're setting an example for our neighbors. So we're not here to take on their issues and their problems. Homelessness is something that's very important to all of us. But we're, it's also important to set the tone and the example, and that's what we're doing with this tiny home effort. It is 100% based and focused on locals. Uh, I actually visited the tiny home site throughout the process, and I actually met a lot of the, the, the new tenants. We keep hearing this talk that this tiny home program is a regional effort, and that it's for South El Monte and El Monte as well, and that's completely false. Uh, the tiny home project is not part of the homeless cohort, which would include South El Monte and El Monte. And so throughout the past couple of months, I've heard uh, current and former elected officials try to uh, create this notion that we are welcoming in the homeless population of all the valley with arms wide open, and that is completely false. If there is any effort that would be bringing in um, these uh, regional population, it would be homeless cohort efforts. And so we saw a, a homeless cohort effort, and I believe it was the showers about, almost a year ago, and nobody batted an eye. Last month, we opened up the tiny homes. That is 100% local, and we've heard a bunch of misinformation come out. And I just think that it's irresponsible to be doing that. Um, you know, we cannot keep politicizing most vulnerable in our community, and we have to keep acting. So it was important for me to just, you know, officially bring up the record so that everybody is aware that this project goes back to 2015. Not something that I brought, it's not something that the new council brought, and it's not anything that's related to the tiny homes. So, if anybody has any comments, now's your time.
Yeah, I guess.
I'll, I'll be brief. Um, I, I know at the last, or one of the last two council meetings, there was an item involving this cohort and our interest in uh, pursuing funding for families at the brink of homelessness and possibly funding that would become available for um, ADUs that would be geared towards um, again, families at the brink, you know, um, who might experience homelessness without intervention. So that is something that this cohort is, is, is considering. We, it came to us at the last council meeting or the previous council meeting. And I think that that will be another example of this cohort uh, working together to, you know, um, address the homelessness and preventative measures um, in this case, and, and in the case of the funding that I'm referring to. So we'll, we'll have to wait and see, but um, you know, there should, hopefully, we'll have yet another initiative to add to this collaborative effort.
Yes, great, thank you. And I know that we are on other projects, uh, partnering up with uh, neighbors, and then there are also a multitude of other projects that are being uh, completely individually. And so I've, I've told staff that they have to consider the pros and cons of projects, especially in a year like this where we have a, uh, we have a multitude of funds and opportunities to take on this effort individually. We don't have to work uh, with, with other cities if it's not the main, uh, if it's not gonna give us the best results. So account, uh, staff is aware of that, and I know that they are diligent, and I know that they're also very knowledgeable on the topic. So I trust that they will uh, make the best decisions on the behalf of our city. So at this moment, I'll make a uh, motion to receive and accept, file uh, the staff report. Can I get a second?
Second.
The Clerk, roll call please.
Thank you. Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Damian?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. And so at this moment, we are at item number seven. I'm not entirely sure who pulled the item.
I pulled it, Mayor. Thank you. Um, I just wanna say um, that I think it's about time that, that we added, we added um, mobile home spaces, single-family homes, condos, and, and put a a cap on the amount of money that they can increase the rent, like we heard from Isochi, from Beatriz, Mario Macial in the past. Mario, in fact, was one of the ones that lost his house because he couldn't afford the rent increase. And it is so important that we protect all of our residents. I know there was some concern about landlords um, losing out money and that they were already being fair. Well, this isn't being done for those landlords that are already being fair. It's not going to affect them at all, and I appreciate them. It's going to affect those landlords that are trying to cheat our community members, that are trying to rent, increase the rent 12%, 15%, which is unfair. And that's the purpose of item number seven, to protect all residents that are renting in the city of Ballin Park for, from those unfair practices. So I'm excited, this should have been done two years ago, but I'm excited that it's finally on the agenda. Hopefully it'll pass, so come January 1, 2022, it doesn't impact our residents because the LA County uh, moratorium will, will seize January 1. So hopefully this item will pass. It will help our residents so that they're more at ease, knowing that the rent increase won't increase uh, by a large amount. And if it does, please be sure to notify the city of Ballin Park so we can contact the landlord. Um, that's all on that item. If anybody else had any other comments?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Well, um, I was on the council a couple of years ago when we adopted the rent control on multifamily properties. I supported that. And when this item came up, this, you know, um, new, new additions to the ordinance was proposed, I asked that we take some time to really understand, to be thoughtful, to consider the policy impacts, um, especially for, my concern is really for um, single-family homes that are owner-occupied and what happens at the sale of those properties. Um, how a rent control ordinance would impact, um, you know, the value of their properties. And that's something I still don't have answers um, for. And um, I, I also just think that we rushed this. And um, so I'm gonna oppose this like I did at the last council meeting, and that's all.
Great, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Damian.
Yeah, and I just wanna clarify, you know, I've, there hasn't been anything that points out or that shows us that a rent control ordinance in a city has diminished property values. I'm in real estate, I'm in mortgages, and it's, trust me, the values of the properties are not going down. There are cities like Santa Monica that have rent control, and the property values have not decreased. So there hasn't been any proof, I've looked through the California Association of Realtors, NAR, the Na- National Association of Realtors, and there hasn't been any proof, nothing that points that a rent control ordinance in a municipality or a city has impacted property values.
Mayor?
Council?
Yes, Mayor Protem.
Uh, I just wanna add that I don't feel this being rushed. Two years ago, I asked that we add these items on. And if we don't act, then come January 1, 2022, our residents will be in trouble. So we do need to act now. Um, it's been in mind, and I had asked the attorney back two years ago to put those items on this, but it wasn't done, it wasn't approved, but, but I'm glad it is now, and we do have to approve it. I hope uh, my colleagues are in agreement, because if not, our residents will suffer. With that, I would like to make a motion.
Oh, before you do that, Mayor Protem, can I just add one more? I wanted to ask, I wanted to ask the mayor for the floor just to, just to mention, I do have a friend who is looking at purchasing a rent-controlled property in the West LA area. And, and, and actually, that property is less than, in terms of the value, less than, you know, it, it would, it's more affordable, let's say, than a market-rate multifamily property, um, you know, of equal number of units. And, um, and that would be my concern, Councilmember Damian. So I, you know, I have, I have been witness, I guess, to a possible transaction involving a rent-controlled multifamily property. And I understand that it is at a low, lesser value than, let's say, a market-rate multifamily property in that neighborhood. So that would be my concern. Um, but I'll just leave it there. So go ahead, Mayor Protem.
So, Mayor Protem?
Thank you.
Before you make a motion, just wanted to comment.
Go ahead.
So, um, you know, I, I don't think it's rushed. I think it's something that we should have kept our eye on since the first ordinance that came in place, because right after that, we had a pandemic. And we've been aware that housing insecurity is one of the biggest issues, not just during the pandemic, but pre-pandemic. The pandemic exasperated both a multitude of socioeconomic issues, and one of those is uh, housing insecurity. So I, uh, I, I, not only myself, but uh, sure, city attorneys are well aware, because he's the one that's been writing the letters, we've had a multitude of, of residents that are continuously coming to us because their rents are going up, or because their landlords are not doing their due diligence. Um, you know, and just to name a few, and I don't know if you've, have you been, have you been CCing the council, uh, the attorney?
Uh, Mayor, I don't uh, CC the council on everyone. When it gets to a point where, you know, I think um, there, there's some um, issue that's not, that's out of the norm, I will CC the council.
And I, and I do think the council was at least aware through uh, voice that we are currently dealing with at least three properties, and that's just that we know of. And that's, there's one on Frazier, there's one on Bedale Circle. I think uh, Councilmember Damon is also aware of that. I know he's been following it, uh, Bedale Circle, and then there's another one on Byland. And that's just three of the rental properties that we're aware of. That's just three where people decided to speak up. As we know that, for the most part, uh, immigrants, Latinos, uh, people of color, working-class people are too afraid to speak up sometimes. But we know that this is an issue. You know, we should have been, we should be following housing 24/7. We just, we've been having these discussions about ADUs and SB9 and SB10, uh, Housing Element, RINA. And so we know, we should be knowing the facts, right? Uh, two years ago, before the, before rent control passed, uh, Ballin Park had the highest eviction rate at 1%, higher than the county. What that number is today, I'm not sure. We know that it takes, it's $100,000 to be able to comfortably afford a home. And that's a study that was done in 2018. And we know since then, prices have skyrocketed, so that number might be different. The average median household income in Ballin Park is less than $70,000. So, we know that the average family needs some sort of support. We know that it's not just economical support, we know that this leads to other things, right? We're avoiding economic stress that then reduces your health, your mental health, your ability to eat healthier, your ability to have a stable education. And we're seeing that the, the skyrocketing prices- Your ability to eat healthier, your ability to have a stable education. And we're seeing that the the skyrocketing prices in housing. And the development that that that's the housing has brought is hurting our families. It's not hurting our just our families, it's hurting the systems that they rely on. It's hurting the school district. What's the school district gonna do when they don't have enough for one school anymore? And how does that affect us? Right? Baldwin Park is slowly but surely becoming a a a place that is not friendly to families and we need to change that. Because we need continuous generations. One of the things that we learned about our community during the arena and housing element was that. People want their kids to be near them. And one of the biggest fears that they can't do so because they can't afford it. So we keep these things in mind. I keep these things in mind. I've met with a multitude. And I mean a multitude of people, even in groups uh from from the apartments. So I did do my due diligence and I keep the facts in mind. I keep the fact that our city hasn't grown in twenty years in mind. And I keep the demographic of my city in mind. And I too agree that I don't see any proof that this is gonna hurt property values. We hear we hear property values, we get thrown out every time something uh people don't want gets passed. Um you know, and. As many of you know, we've been working with Habitat. Uh we were looking at properties to purchase. We thought we had twelve million dollars in the bank, so I did spend some time. One of the ideas that we had was that we could potentially buy a multifamily complex. And uh turn it into HOA, into affordable homeownership. Uh throughout that time, whenever I found one of those, I never saw the price decrease. I never saw a affordable price. Because if we did, trust me, it would have been ours now. So these prices are not hurting the Baldwin Park. The Baldwin Park uh sta- stock of of housing. So you know, I feel comfortable passing this. I think it's necessary and it's and it's uh it's our due diligence to really. You know, pay attention to the facts and pay attention to the needs of our residents. Uh we also had a forty-five percent uh renter rate and that's important. So those are just my comments. Uh but Mayor Protem, go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. And you made a a very good point. I'm working for the Baldwin Park School District. I know how many families or I have come across many families. That live one or two, three families to a home because they cannot afford a place of their own. And this will definitely help them to be able to stay in their in their own home or their own apartment or condo, whatever they may be living in. And not have to double up with a family member or a friend because they got evicted because they couldn't afford the rent. So I think this is a great ordinance. I think it it will prosper. Um. Let's put it in place and and see that it will, it will be good for everybody. So with that, I'd like to make a po- a motion to pass item number seven, second reading of ordinance number one four six six. Entitled in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Baldwin Park, California. Amending chapter eleven, section one twenty-nine to the Baldwin Park Municipal Code. Prohibiting residential real property and mobile home space rental rate increase that exceeds five percent annually annually, excuse me. Within the city. Staff recommends that the City Council waive second reading and adopt ordinance number one four six six entitled. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Baldwin Park, California, amending chapter eleven, section one twenty-nine. To the Baldwin Park Municipal Code prohibiting residential real property and mobile home space rental rate increase that exceeds. Five percent annually within the city. Thank you, mayor.
I'll second.
Great. City clerk, roll call please.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor Protem Avila? Councilmember Damian?
Yes.
Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
No.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you for that, City Clerk. I believe the motion passes three to one. And so at this moment, we move to the public hearing. We have a request to the City Council from the Planning Commission to approve development agreement. Twenty-one dash zero two to permit a commercial cannabis cultivation and manufacturing facility within the uh industrial commercial industrial commercial zone. Pursuant ordinance fourteen four two and this is located at thirteen zero seven five Garvey Avenue and the applicant is Don Verde LLC. Case number DA twenty-one dash zero two for can that twenty-one dash zero two. Uh so go ahead, Ron, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Uh Associate Planner Melissa Chipris will be providing the presentation.
Uh thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem and Councilmembers. Uh before we begin the presentation, I did want to make a quick note of an error um in ordinance fourteen sixty-five. That was provided to you in your agenda packets for tonight. Um so section two, item one of ordinance fourteen sixty-five. Uh reads as because of the location of the commercial cannabis business is located within the I industrial zone. Um but it should read that the subject commercial cannabis business is located within the IC industrial commercial zone. So I did want to make quick note of that. Uh okay, so the case before you is development agreement uh twenty-one dash zero two. The applicant, Don Verde LLC, and is requesting to establish a new manufacturing and cultivation cannabis facility. Uh next slide, please. The applicant is proposing the cultivation and manufacturing facility at one three zero seven five Garvey Avenue. Uh the subject site again is located within the IC industrial commercial zone. And has an approximate lot area of fifteen thousand five hundred and thirty-eight square feet. With a building footprint of approximately five thousand twenty-eight square feet. Next slide, please. Uh the applicant is proposing to utilize a total of approximately seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-two square feet. Of the existing two-story uh commercial building. The interior of the existing building will undergo tenant improvements on the first and second floor to modify the space for the purposes of cultivation. And manufacturing of cannabis. Uh next slide, please. Uh so the Planning Division has reviewed the application to ensure compliance with all requirements set forth in cannabis ordinances. Fourteen forty-two and fourteen forty-three. Uh the location is within the required zone district. And is at a distance greater than six hundred feet from a school, childcare facility, youth center. Or park and is at a distance greater than twenty-five feet from a dwelling unit um within a residential zone. Uh and the on here on this slide, you can see staff has compiled a map and uh indicating the distances between the proposed cannabis facility. And the closest residential structure uh which we have here um. Which is the green line to the right and is approximately sixty-three feet away from the building. And in the blue lines here um are the nearest residential accessory structures which include. Uh storages and garages ranging from fifty feet to sixty-one feet in distance from the proposed building. Uh next slide, please. Uh so to conclude, staff recommends that the City Council adopt ordinance fourteen sixty-five and approve DA twenty-one dash zero two. Uh this does conclude staff's presentation uh and the applicant and as well as special counsel Julia Silva are present for any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you for that, Melissa. We don't see you here often, so nice to see you. Um so yeah, if any council members have any questions, now is the time. I will say that I was at the uh, I was at the commission. Uh the commissioners' meeting and I did hear a lot about their uh information and uh a lot of their security features, which I think are great. Then I also uh saw that it is a uh that the landlord is also very well aware of what's gonna go on there and he's a supportive of the idea. So he even he would, he was here and I think that's also a good, good thing to note, right? So uh council members, if you have any questions or concerns, the floor is yours.
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Protem.
I have a question, thank you. I saw um, is that the building right by the city yard?
Yes, that's the one.
How far is that from the facility that we just purchased?
I think it would be a good, sorry, I'm answering all the questions, but uh maybe Sam knows, but uh we do have. So I've passed by there often, so we do have the um the city yard. Then we have the Aristi- Aristocrat Motel and I think there's another property, right? Oh, Sam, do you know how approximately how many yards away it is?
Uh no, I I I don't, not not off the top of my head.
Okay, I I know we have a a certain feet requirement that needs to be away from residential areas. Um however, again, this is my concern. It it is the required amount of feet away from a residential area. It doesn't take away that it's very close to a residential area. There's two schools by that area where children will walk by Frazier. Which is very close to the facility. There's Tracy Elementary, there's Deansa Elementary, there's Sarah Vista High School. And Sarah Vista Junior High, that the students are constantly gonna be walking by those areas. Um my concern is the proximity, even though it's legal, the proximity to our schools, the proximity to our houses. Uh what is the traffic impact going to be in that area? And the the smell coming out of that area also, it's so close to the homes. I I would think the the odor from the facility is going to seep out into the our community. I'm so I'm concerned about that. Because look, you can see the map right there, how close it is. I know exactly what the little alley is. It's very narrow. We look at the numbers and and again, it's legal. But if you drive by that little alley, it's a very narrow alley. Only one car can go in at a time. You have to wait for another car to go by. And you have homes all around that area and all down Frazier. Students walk through here to get to Tracy, to get to Sarah Vista, to get to Deansa. Um I'm just not very happy about the location of this facility. I like it when they're out in. In industrial areas where there are no homes and families that can be affected by the either the traffic impact. Or the odor being uh brought out by this business. That's all my comments.
Thank you. Is there any other council members that have a comment, question, concern?
Mayor, I have a question for the applicant with regard to Mayor Protem's um concern about the odor. Is the applicant present to answer a question about that?
Hi, um. Thank you for uh allowing me to come here today. Um Ms. Garcia, so on on the odor mitigation piece of it. We take uh extra precautions ensuring that odor is contained within facilities. So. To give you a sense of how that's accomplished, we have a building here, right? Within that building, we built another box within that building that's completely sealed by way of uh foam-cooled storage panels. In addition to that, we have bipolar ionization located throughout the facility, which is in the HVAC system. It essentially takes this gas that has this smell, breaks it down to its most simplest component parts, mostly which is carbon dioxide. Um and so when you do that, you eliminate the odor that way. Um and the other one, the other, the other technology that we use are carbon, carbon filters. Basically destroys the smell. Those carbon filters are located in each room where where any marijuana is located. As well as throughout the hallways and in the front to uh further kill any odor uh that you might have. So we take next level precautions to ensure that there's no odors floating to the uh community around us. On on uh speak to the other concern the Mayor Protem had. Our security provides what's known as the halo effect to um residents and businesses around us. And so what I mean by that, and there's actually evidence that only supports a decrease in crime. When you have a cultivation operation in the area. That evidence was based on a study done in Denver, Colorado, as well as a study done in California. And the reason is um following. We have a internal security guard there during work hours. Um and so that person's constantly watching our video equipment, watching what's going out in in the the area around us. We have security cameras located uh outside all the perimeter of the building. Uh many of them and we can see as far as four hundred feet away. And so not only do I have a security on s- s- person on site watching those cameras, but twenty-four-seven, I have a live person. Watching our facility and within four hundred yards of our facility. So our neighbors, our residents behind us, if anything's happening at their houses, we'll be able to squash that immediately, call the 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 police and let them know what's going on. So we're adding an extra layer of protection or security within four hundred yards, kind of around where we're located. And in addition to that, we have uh lighting so that, you know, you don't have people lurking around. Um and so the evidence, I guess at the end of the day, I can talk all I want, but the evidence suggests. That when a legal uh legal valid license uh cultivation operation is in the area, um there's actually a decrease in crime. Um so hopefully that gets people comfortable with um that that concern.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions as well. Councilmember Garcia is done with her questioning?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Um yeah, Mr. Barra, um have a question. I was reviewing your application. Do you currently hold four different licenses?
Yes, I have uh, I'm on, I'm on licenses in the city of LA, uh three different licenses. And um I had sold a business with a cannabis license uh that still took place about a year ago.
And you said uh security-wise for this facility, you're gonna have, obviously you have the camera system that's gonna be. Monitoring your facility and you can see up to four hundred feet. Um are you gonna have twenty-four-hour security at your facility?
So my my approach is um, it's the same approach I use in South Central LA, which is where my other facility is located is. We have a guard on staff ten hours a day during it basically starting at eight in the morning and and being there throughout the day. Um and then uh after that person leaves, um we leave it to the third-party surveillance system. Uh company that's constantly watching our our facility. And as a practical matter, what I've found is that um that security company is much more capable. Of diffusing a situation as opposed to an internal security guard who may be faced with five people, you know, with guns. Um so it 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 it, I think um. Reduces the chances of something like that happening by by way of having a external group watching us and diffusing the situation.
And have you ever been robbed before in any of your facilities and how have you, how have you managed that?
Yeah, um yeah, we had been um attacked uh at one point. Uh it was about six cars deep. Guys jumped out of the car all at once at us and uh how we managed it was the example I just laid out for you. Our internal security guard was, you know, literally um with with gun in hand, telling him, you know. Well, I'm I'm inside. That didn't thwart the attack, but the third-party surveillance system company that did thwart the attack, they talked him out of it. Told him that the sheriff was on their way and ultimately um uh they scattered.
So a couple of things that I noticed, Mr. Parra, was uh during the planning commission meeting, you mentioned uh at first. You had mentioned that you had never been robbed before. Um and now you're stating.
I've not.
Well, that's what I I I seen on the uh planning commission meeting. I can go back and review that. Maybe I'm I'm wrong, but. From what I recall, you had mentioned that you had never been robbed and then you said you were, you were attacked once. And just now, when you were uh speaking to, answering to Councilmember Garcia's questions, you had said that you were going to be putting. A twenty-four-seven security guard um in place, but now you're saying that you're gonna have a a a guard there. At your facility for ten hours a day. So. Why is it that you wouldn't uh, you wouldn't be in favor of implementing a security guard there at your facility? Twenty-four hours a day to avoid any type of uh, you know, if he's there from eight AM to what, six PM? You know, you're probably more at risk of getting robbed at night when the facility is closed.
Yeah, well, I can um, I guess as a pragmatic matter, my experience has taught me that. Um it's most important to have a third-party security firm watching you during the the night hours. Because it can diffuse the situation without somebody getting hurt. That's very important to me. I've always maintained that we have not been robbed because I've not been robbed, been attacked, but I've not been robbed. Uh hopefully that.
And and your guard, your your security guard, will he be armed or is he in on?
He's armed. It's armed security uh for.
Yeah, so I mean, I and I understand that diffusing the situation, I get that. By the time the police arrives, uh you know, from within your third-party monitoring system, you know, at least the guy who's armed. May be able to avoid from them, you know, getting into the property. So maybe looking into providing a twenty-four-hour security guard at your facility would be. Something that would make some of those residents a little bit more, more at ease. You know, that's that's probably what more of the worried about. You know, I know that you can, you can mitigate the smell with the filtration systems that this can put in place. We as a city can make sure that you're abiding by that, but as far as the security is concerned. You know, if you have an armed guard there, I think it would wise to it increases hours from ten, you know, from. Ten hours a day to the twenty-four-hour security. I think that would be.
If the council feels strongly about that, I can, I can consider. If the council feels strongly about that, I can, I can consider that. I guess my concern would be, no one wants a gunfight. And so that's the way I approach it. My experience has taught me again that the third-party service is much more capable of diffusing a situation than an armed guard within a facility. But again, I'm open to suggestion.
May I make a comment as well? This is Legal Counsel for Don Verde LLC.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Regarding Mr. Damian's point about 24-hour security, I've found in my experience, I've been working with cannabis businesses since the beginning of licensing for medical in California. And in particular, I see, well, I've seen more issues with dispensaries, but from the attempted robberies, I've seen, as Mr. Parra mentioned, more injury and violence happen when there is an armed guard on the premises. You know, you can look in the city of LA that these guards have been shot before and one has actually died. We're not seeing that as, you know, with cultivations and manufacturings because you're not having the day-to-day cash handling, cash on premises and open to the public. However, that being said, I I do want to make the point that I've also found that having that security that Mr. Parra is proposing where they are working remotely 24/7 is actually a more accurate way to thwart any risk because they are using technology, whereas an armed guard is just patrolling the premises. So any robber who can, you know, watch the armed guard can pick up on patterns. And if the the guard is patrolling one area, can try to enter from another area. So finding that, that, that presence, that digital presence is actually more effective.
Thank you for that, for that clarification, ma'am. And then my last question, Mr. Parra, is are you the only owner of this of Don Verde or do you have any other co-owners?
The only, only owner, owner.
You're the only owner, okay. Thank you, that's all the questions that I had.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then I did want to just touch on the subject that you, by having the third-party surveillance, are actually going above what the standard is set at the city for security measures, I believe. That's correct.
Sorry, can you repeat that question?
So by having a third-party person surveilling your cameras or your property 24/7, you're going above what the, what the, what the security standards are for all the other companies around us.
Correct, that's not required. I've used that in LA City, found that it's a, it's a much better solution than a, an armed guard, and so that's, yeah.
Mayor and members of the council, I'd like to refer you to the ordinance adopted by the city council to allow cannabis in the city. Specifically, Section 127.11. It doesn't require an armed guard on the premises. It requires a plan to be approved by your chief of police. And the camera shall be in use 24 hours, seven days a week. It appears that in this instance, the applicant is going above and beyond what the code requires for your information.
Thank you. I believe, Mr. Osorio, did you have a comment to make?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening. My name is Luis Osorio. I'm a land use planner with JRG Attorneys here in Salinas, up in Northern California. We prepared the application that was submitted on behalf of Mr. Parra for the project that is before you tonight. And in regards to the security, as it was just mentioned, the the city code, the municipal code has certain requirements for security. Our application contains a security plan that includes all the items that are required by the municipal code, which also follow the requirements of the state law for security. There are a number of requirements, as you may be aware of, that are required by the state. And I'm sure the staff reviewed the application and they found that the security plan that is in the application is is consistent with all those requirements. And and there may be some details, as again, as I was, as it was just mentioned, that may have to be worked out in in further detail with the police department, and Mr. Parra will, will be glad to do that. Also, the Mayor Protem, if I may offer an answer to the traffic question, which was also mentioned, I think, by a member of the neighborhood earlier in the public comments. This facility is not going to have any visitors other than deliveries. The, the, the in and out traffic of the facility will be limited to employees of the facility. And there's plenty of parking, this is a commercial area. The building was built per the city code standards. And the parking on the side is that which is required for the building and for the use based on the standards of the municipal code. And then finally, also answering or referring to the, the other issue that the Mayor Protem brought up, was the location of the building. Obviously, the city made a decision when they adopted the ordinance to allow these facilities in the IC commercial zone. And this is one of those zones in the city. And the, the, the other issue is that there is, what's, I guess it's a secondary home, a secondary street, excuse me, that separates this commercial area from the residential neighborhood. And finally, just to, so that everybody has an added level of comfort. Again, going back to the application, we, on the application, we have site management and employee policies that are going to be used for the management of the facility. There are good neighborhood policy elements and community relations on the plan. And so with all these, you know, I think, you know, again, given the location, this is gonna be and, you know, and and added, you know, venue for the city to, to, to make some additional revenue, and that's also the purpose of the development agreement. I leave it at that and I appreciate the time, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I appreciate you responding to my concerns. However, it's still a concern to me. I don't know how many of you owners have a facility 63 feet away from your home, do any of you?
It's a question for me. No, I do not currently. But like I said, the, the empirical evidence, the evidence that's out there suggests that it makes the area safer.
Would you live next to a facility like that?
Currently, I don't, I would, but I don't.
Okay, so the concern here is residents are concerned. I'm concerned, and I know the ordinance was passed for, for this type of business to be in that area. I was not part of passing that ordinance. I was, and I had mentioned before, that I, I wouldn't approve cannabis in the city of Balden Park for the same reason because they put it too close to homes. The distance that that we approved, I don't believe is enough. The businesses that are already here, we want to make sure they're successful. All I'm asking is that these businesses go away from the residential areas. There's plenty of industrial areas that are nowhere near homes, nowhere near schools, nowhere where our children will be walking, and I know you're providing security, but we never know what may happen in a given day. God forbid, there's a shootout. Bullets can go anywhere. I don't know how far a bullet can travel, but I can guarantee you it could travel to, as far as to one of those homes if children are outside playing. That is my concern. I would welcome you into my city if it was another location not near our homes, not near my children, not near our residents. That is my concern. I would want it 63 feet away from my home. And that is the concern of the residents that live there, they don't want it near their home. And that's, that's all it is. Nothing against you, nothing against your business, but it's the location. I, I don't like the location, I'm not, even though the city ordinance passed it, I'm not satisfied with the location of this facility. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So at this moment, I will open up the public hearing. So anybody looking to speak in favor, I will, now is the time to do so. Looking at-
Buenas tardes o noches otra vez, señor alcalde. Quiero darles gracias a la concejala Alejandra por externar sus preocupaciones y siempre estar pendiente de las necesidades más básicas de nuestra comunidad, especialmente de nuestros niños. Yo tuve un negocio muy cercas de esta locación, exactamente en la calle Best Garby. Mi dirección era Garby 13011. Y por consiguiente, también era parte de la calle Fraser. Siempre había niños caminando enfrente de mi negocio que van de Anza School. Y también venían los niños que estaban cruzando el freeway, cruzando el freeway por el puente, este, y caminaban a Anza School también. Pero por cosas del destino, tuve que vivir en mi locas, en mi, en mi negocio por dos meses y pude ver 24 horas el movimiento de esa área. Creo que si el negocio queda enfrente de la calle Garby, no va a tener mucho impacto con el caminar de los niños a la escuela porque está muy separado, el caminar de los niños es por la Fraser. Lo que sí me gustaría ver de cualquier negocio-
Good evening, once again, Mr. Mayor. I would like to thank Councilmember Alejandra for her comments and the fact that she always is concerned about the needs, especially of the children. I was a resident of that area, specifically Best Garby 13011, and which is also part of Fraser. And always saw the children walking in the area, especially going back and forth from the Anza School. There is a freeway that's crossing the area and I saw the children crossing there all the time. I had to leave because of reasons that are not pertinent to explain. I had to leave in the, in my business for two months and I saw personally how this business is carried on. I don't think these, the children are necessarily directly exposed because they mainly walk through on Fraser.
Hay mucho, mucho movimiento de personas sin hogar en esa área, especialmente por el freeway, por el negocio de Seven Eleven, que está en esa esquina. Pero honestamente, yo camine varias veces de noche de mi negocio a Badwin Park Boulevard, y esa área siempre fue muy limpia, muy tranquila. No veo mucha preocupación en, en establecer un negocio ahí. Además, es importante apoyar los negocios, pero me gustaría ver de este negocio y de cualquier negocio que se establece en Badwin Park, la inversión que ellos hacen en la comunidad alrededor, que va a ser afectada por este negocio. Sí me gustaría ver empleo para esta comunidad y más servicios de limpieza, especialmente en esa área, que es muy necesaria los servicios de limpieza y otras, otras cosas para nuestros niños que viven en ese vecindario.
There is not much movement in that area next to the freeway, with exception of the Seven Eleven businesses that is nearby. Honestly, I have walked in this area at night by myself and the area is very quiet, still and clean. I don't see a problem with this business. I also want to express my support for this type of businesses, but I would like to see, to know what is what this business is going to do for the community, especially in regards to cleanliness and other aspects that benefit, would benefit the children.
Bueno, como miembro de la comunidad, me gustaría ver esas, esos servicios para mi comunidad. Que venga, que del envolimiento que tenga el dueño para esa comunidad. Gracias.
And as a member of the community, I would like to see this type of involvement on the part of the owner of this business, involvement in things that are going to benefit the community. Thank you.
Is there anybody else looking to speak in favor? Okay, seeing that nobody else is looking to speak in favor, I will now move to open up the public hearing for those speaking in opposition. Is there anybody looking to speak in opposition? So looking at, nobody is looking to speak in opposition, I will officially close the public hearing. I believe, so we've heard some comments in favor and against, and then I don't know if you were gonna come up here and then comment, if you guys are okay. But I did, I did, during the public commission meeting, I did it here. So the public commission, I can't even speak, the commissioner meeting, during the presentation, I did hear that you were, would commit to hiring four individuals? If you want to come up here?
Yeah, I think we made two statements to kind of address her, her comments about our involvement with the community. The first was that we would hire 40% of, of the staff from the city of Balden Park. And the second is, is the technology used for vertical growing and for growing cultivation. We would try to do a program where we do that for vegetables. So like showing, showing the city how like students come in and show you how you can grow vertical farms in these enclosed environments.
So you're, just to be clear, you're doing vertical farming in that building?
Yeah, a part of the use will be vertical farming and cultivation. What Juan is describing is called controlled environmental agriculture. Growing big, big business today, it's a over-billion dollar industry. We, we created a program in the city of Los Angeles in District 9, where District 9 basically gave us a plot of land to build out a, a, again, a controlled environmental agriculture center. So we have, it's kind of a mixed-use site where we have custom-made containers where we do indoor farming for conventional leafy greens and things like that. And then we have a greenhouse area. These are all conventional crops. We then, and that, and what we're doing there is providing a, a training ground for people to come, residents, you know, college students to come in and learn how to, to grow in these environments. It's not only, you know, good for, you know, your, your own skills, but also can lead to a career. And we provide, provide a curriculum along with that. So as part of what we're doing in, in Balden Park, maybe on a smaller scale, but if the city is, is open to it and they can find land for us, we'd be more than, more than happy to do something that, that, like that here. It's kind of a part of our, our branding message. We're doing the same thing in the state of New Jersey as well right now.
Great, thank you. And I know, so I'm not entirely sure if any other, any other cultivator in the city is doing vertical farming, but I think it's pretty neat that you bring it up, I think it's a-
Oh, thank you, that is, it's, it'll be interesting, and when we're up and running, you guys should all come and see it, but it's a two to three levels of, of vertical farming, so it's pretty efficient.
Very nice. And then I know that you also committed to the, to the 40%, depending on how many, many, how many people you staff completely, and I think that's just based on, just kind of the, kind of, I guess, the, I don't know what the word is, but, you know, when you're, when you're in a cultivation, you need more people with chemistry knowledge and some, some type of-
Yeah, yes, we have a, so the, the, both cultivation and manufacturing, we do need degreed scientists, and that can be a little more difficult to find depending where you're at. But the majority of the workforce is more around, tend to the plant, so it's more like farm labor. And, and those farm labor positions can grow and elevate into other positions, so that's our- So that's our approach, is they're entry-level positions that can turn into something more.
Very neat. Well, I did sit through the planning commission meeting, and then I'm here today. You know, you are going above and beyond the standards of security by providing 24/7 surveillance. And then you do have a neat concept of vertical farming, which I think is important to have around, right? You know, I hear the concerns of my colleagues, and I think that we hear that concern a lot, but we hear it with everything. So like when we're doing the tiny homes, we're allowing sort of development, and it's a difficult thing to get around, because we live in a seven-square-city-mile city, right, in my seven-square-mile city. And I kind of always try to emphasize on that, where, you know, you can have a single home on one side, and you look over the fence, and there is, you know, a full-on commercial zone. And that also happens on the other side of the city, such as Arrow. So it's one of the harder things to get by. But I think, you know, you were patient, and I appreciate that. I know that you were patient as we were transitioning. I believe this is Julia Silva's first DA. Is that correct? Yes. So this is the first DA that our cannabis attorney works on. So I think you have a plan. You're pretty experienced. You know, so I think you are a good partner. I don't know if any of our council has any more comments, but if not, I would make a motion to approve the DA.
I'll second.
Great. City clerk, can I get...
Yes, thank you, mayor.
Oh, sorry about that. Sorry about that. So I will make a motion, also waive the first, so approve the DA and waive the first hearing. Oh, gotcha. So the motion is to introduce for first reading by title only, ordinance 1465 entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Baldwin Park, California, authorizing the City of Baldwin Park to enter into a statutory development agreement with Don Verde LLC for the cultivation and manufacturing of commercial cannabis at the real property located at 13075 Garvey Avenue, Baldwin Park, California, 91706, APN 8556-022-043." And that's my motion. And Councilmember Garcia, I believe you seconded it?
Yes. And, mayor, for the record, may I also add the amendment on the floor by staff under Section 2.1 to be read as because the location of the commercial cannabis business is located within the IC industrial commercial zone, it is anticipated that the use of the property is consistent with the other industrial uses with the area.
Yes. Thank you for that, city clerk. So the motion...
Thank you, mayor.
...is on the floor. It was seconded by Councilmember Garcia. City clerk, can you do a roll call?
Yes. Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Avila?
No.
Councilmember Damian?
Yes.
Motion passes 3.1.
Great. Thank you for that, city clerk, and I believe we move on. I believe we move on to the next. We move on to the next, and we have a reporter of officers, and that is a designation of primary and alternate representative for the San Gabriel Valley Mosquito and Vector Control District. So recently, this seat opened up. And then one of the interesting things about it is that we don't need a council member on there. It could be just anybody, as long as it's a resident of the city of Baldwin Park. So I did ask Sam if any of the Public Works people might be interested, because I do think it might be related to the work that Public Works does. So I don't know if you've, I know we've been very busy, Sam, so I would like to take more time to designate somebody. So I would just ask that the council is okay with moving this to maybe the next, or in January, we can appoint somebody with more time and a little bit more thoughtfulness for it. So my motion will be to move this over to the first meeting of January. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, mayor.
Okay, great. And then, roll call, city clerk?
Yes, thank you. Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Damian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes 4.
Great, thank you. And so at this point, we are at the city council, city clerk, city treasurer, staff request and communication. I did have some things on the list. I did want to request that staff work on the potential of renewing the bridge at Central School. If anybody has passed through there, we know that it's a very high and very narrow bridge. So it would be essential to look into providing an ADA compliant, an ADA compliant bridge for that area, especially because it's for the children and people who walk their kids to that, to Central Elementary. And then I believe you might have to reach out to the office of Hola Salles or the county to see how we can get that going. Then I did want to just quickly talk about the tiny homes update. I think that was a very great project. I'm sure by now, many of us have seen some of the coverage that we've gotten. We've received a lot of positive press regarding it. So I just wanted to thank staff for doing their due diligence and getting that, you know, getting that facility going in less than four months. It was very nice, and it's a small world. I think I was there with Manny, and I didn't have to introduce myself to the first resident that took, who went into that home, because I actually knew him. I went to automotive adult school with him. So it was, it's very, I mean, of course, it's tragic to see that people need these services, but it's also a good feeling to know that we're helping out our community. And I do want to encourage my colleagues to go out there when they have the time. Sam and John, I know you went out there. I'd have been there. Now, you provided some turkey, and you provided some mashed potatoes and flan. So, you know, I'm thankful for that. So thank you for, you know, going above and beyond for our constituents and doing that nice deed on Thanksgiving. But I do want to invite my colleagues to go out there and check out the site and talk to Giovanni, who was, I believe, the site manager, and get to also see our neighbors. You might actually know some of them. And I do want an update. I know Councilmember Damian requested the potential of a new family service center at the old Olson site. So I just want to know when we can expect an update on that. And over the weekend, somebody did ask about the potential of being able to share, like, video with our PD. So if that's something that we can look into, have some sort of hotline or email where people would want to share some stuff. I know that they, that's something that people have been asking about. I know that in previous meetings, we were talking about a potential reward program for people who can help us solve crimes. So that might be a good thing to look into. And then I want to remind everybody that tomorrow, we have our tree lighting ceremony. I believe it starts at 5:00, and the actual tree lighting is at 6:00. Is that correct? Great. And then Saturday is a busy day. We have breakfast with Santa, and then we have the community health fair, the community health fair with the Lions Club. And then there is also a Baldwin Park High School resource fair that day. So that is a busy day, and I hope to see the community there. Councilmember Damian, I do see that you have an item on here, so I'm gonna give you the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, mine's to direct staff to bring back to the December 15th meeting an ordinance setting a campaign contribution limit, as well as a campaign finance ordinance restricting contributions from city contractor staff or developers, or anyone applying before the city to do business. I was reviewing, doing some research, there is a organization called California Common Cause who's helped various cities. Right now, they're currently helping, I believe, the city of Pasadena to write some of these ordinances relating to campaign contributions, as well as campaign finance ordinances. There's a couple of cities that already have adopted this. For example, the city of Alhambra has a $250 campaign contribution limit, city of Beverly Hills, $450, Burbank, $500, Claremont, $250, Culver City, $1,000, Hermosa Beach, $250, Los Angeles, $800, San Diego, $650, Santa Monica, $340, and South Pasadena, $1,000. Currently, as where we stand, the city of Baldwin Park does not currently have any type of campaign contribution ordinances in place. So therefore, we fall under the default amount set by the state of California, not to exceed the amount of $4,900. To me, that's a substantial amount of money to receive for any one particular donor. I believe that if we want to be fair in the campaign contributions, we should maybe adopt something anywhere from $500 to no more than $1,000, bring something back that we can implement. And then also, like I mentioned, the campaign finance ordinance restricting contributions from any contractor, city contractor staff or developers.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. I saw that you went to visit the tiny homes over the holiday weekend, and actually, that was my plan, but I ended up getting sick today. I'm just sick. So I do plan on going in there to meet our new tenants at the facility, because it is an exciting facility. We have gotten a lot of press release. And I agree, I think it is one of the best projects to date that we have brought to our city. And I'm looking forward to bringing more programs for our low-income families and our homeless population here in the city of Baldwin Park. I also want to, I know I didn't put it on the agenda, but I wanted, and I think we had asked for this before, an update on the Motel 6 conversion, because I want to be clear on how the residents are picked to come live at the Motel 6. Is it the homeless population? What is the process? And I had requested to do a visit also of the facility to see if they are upgrading it like they say that we're going to do. So I really would like to see an update and a report of how these residents are picked to come to Motel 6, and are they to capacity yet to date? So if I can have staff provide that for me at the next council meeting, or if we can schedule a visit as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mayor Pro Tem. So at this moment, we are done with official city business, and I believe we will be recessing into closed session for a couple more items.